Okay.
All right, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I am going to call to order the meeting of the February 8th, 2021, of the Milis Select Board. Joining me tonight are the three Select Board members, myself, Jim McCaffrey, our Vice Chair, Peter Germain, our Clerk, Erin Underhill. We also have our Town Administrator, Ms. Kozinski, and Karen Buray, our Operations Manager. And then we have a few other folks that will be, have agenda items to address, so we will welcome them at the time that we are moving to their item. So, that being said, are there any announcements from members of the Board this evening?
No, thank you.
Okay, so then we'll move on. The first item on our agenda, I can create a little time here. I'm going to bring forward Chris Fogarty, so let's see if we can, because she's got something that I think we should be sharing with the community earlier rather than later. But in any event, the first item is to open the town meeting warrant. This is an annual, an annual event. We take it usually early in February to open the warrant, so we start to build the agenda for the town meeting, scheduled this year for, I believe it's May 10th. So, we will open the warrant. Mr. Kozinski, could you just give us an idea of when you want us to typically have an open and close date to encourage folks who want to submit warrant articles to get them into us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I would recommend that the Board vote to open the warrant for the spring annual town meeting and for it to close at the end of business, two weeks from today. So that would be the February 22nd at 7:30 PM.
Okay.
And as the Board, the Board is aware that, you know, the Board still has the option at a later time to open the warrant, accept certain articles that you approve, and then close the warrant again. But this is the general public open warrant time for the next two weeks.
So, I would take a motion from a member of the Board to open the warrant. Mr. Germain, you're muted.
Still muted.
Still muted. Here we go.
Probably better replay. I moved to open the warrant.
Second.
And close it?
And close.
And close it on two weeks from now, which is what?
February 22nd.
22nd? Yeah, 22nd.
Second.
At 7:30. Moved and seconded. Okay, I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried, and would ask the Town Administrator to notify Boards and Committees that the warrant, open and accepting draft of warrant articles. We move to the next two items, if I could, which is any update from Mr. McBey and Kathy Lannan regarding COVID, COVID vaccine, any other information that he feels appropriate to share with the folks in town tonight?
Hi, yeah, this is John, the Board of Health. Thank you, Chairman McCaffrey. Obviously, the big issue at hand is the vaccination. It's rolling out, albeit lower than we had thought. It is definitely rolling out. We're currently in Phase Two. Phase One, for the first responders, we are finishing off the next couple of weeks in town, actually in Franklin. It includes culmination of the five pounds working together. Phase Two is slated to begin sometime late February, early March for 75-plus. That's where we're at currently, is working on that model for vaccinating that population in town. You know, it's a two-dose vaccine, so there's some considerable challenges, but it can be done, and obviously, you know, right now, there's some stats from the State that we want to hear about that. They say currently, well, more than half a million people have been vaccinated, which is good news. I think that's, you know, first dose. I'm not sure, or includes second dose. There are multiple past clinics now being opened, and there are going to be more as time goes on. We do have a list of those clinics on our website, so if you go onto the town website, Board of Health, there's links to clinics, such as Gillette, Fenway Park. There's also plans for pharmacies to open up, if not already, select pharmacies, CVS is involved in. Heartness Health will have vaccinations as well. So there are definitely a myriad of vaccination clinics opening up as we speak, so we encourage people to monitor those websites and get on board as quickly as you can if you're in a certain phase. Right now, we're in Phase Two, 75-plus. I didn't know, Kathy, you were on board, if you wanted to add anything to that as well?
I'm trying to unmute. I just heard on the news tonight that there are 1,000 openings at Gillette for people over 75 right now, for people who want to try to get to Gillette for that. For the town of Milis, just so you're aware, we looked at the census data. We have 611 people in the census over the age of 75. So, as we begin, clinics will be focusing on that group, and we're going to use age, start with the older first, and work on down the line till 75.
Now, could I just, you know, I want to make sure people understand, at this point, we are not in a position to move forward, though, is that correct? In Milis?
No, we're moving there. We're, some of the challenges of this is knowing how much vaccine the state will allocate to us.
Right, right.
So we're hoping by either the last Wednesday in February or the first in March, we'll be able to begin vaccinating over 75s. We're hoping to have the Council on Aging help us reach out to these people individually to help them with the scheduling, which I don't know if you've heard, it's a challenge, the actual scheduling part, unless you have a family member to help you. So, we'd be, in the beginning, we're planning on reaching out to this group of people. As the phases move on, of course, we'll switch to online registration.
Okay.
In this moment in time, don't call us, we'll call you.
But those who are over 75, who have the opportunity, might be able to get an appointment at Gillette, because there does seem to be some capacity there, right?
Absolutely. Currently, there is.
But who knows how long that'll last, so, okay. Well, thank you very much for the update, and it's encouraging to note that perhaps within a matter of three or four weeks, we might have some capability right here in town, because certainly, those folks who are 75 or older and have trouble getting around would be much easier for them to be able to come to Town Hall for a clinic than it would be to try to get over to a remote location. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that, and just want to make sure that everybody knows that we're working on it. Our Board of Health, our Health Department, all working very hard to do as much as we can to prepare for this, which leads us actually to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Yes, go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt here, and at the risk of sounding like a Karen, the warrant, I mean, the town meeting is actually 5:03, not 5:10.
I'm sorry, you're right. I got my, we flipped it. Thank you.
Sorry, just want to make sure everyone's aware. Thank you.
So that, again, leads us to requests from the Health Director and Mr. Kozinski regarding the appointment of a nurse, temporary nurse, to be able to facilitate a COVID clinic in Milis when the time comes. So I'll start with you, Mr. Kozinski, if you could introduce this, and then ask Mr. McBey to weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the Board is aware, we are in the process of working with the Board of Health to get our vaccination clinics off the ground and moving. But one of the requirements of that is to have a pandemic nurse with certain certifications onboard, and in order to accomplish this, I believe the Board of Health is requesting that the Select Board approve the appointment of a temporary position for Director of Pandemic Nursing Services, and we have an excellent candidate, Susan Sullivan. I believe you have information in your packet in regards to her qualifications. We'd be asking the Board to authorize the Board of Health, who's on behalf of the town, to execute a pandemic nursing services agreement, which would run from now until, I believe, the end of June, and, is that correct, John? Do I have that right? Yeah, that's correct. And you'll see in the contract documents, an outline of the responsibilities of this position. Certainly, it's an important position for the town over the next several months, and also, just to let the Board know that this position will be fully funded with the Care Act fund, so it will not have an impact on the actual town operational budget. And I think John can probably elaborate a little more on some of the particulars of the position, but I certainly fully recommend that the Board approve this agreement and authorize the Board of Health to execute it on behalf of the town.
Yes, Mr. McBey, could you just give us your perspective?
Yes, well, again, thank you, Mr. Kozinski. The pandemic, temporary pandemic nurses would be, it's vital in this climate that we have with the vaccination clinics, to basically organize and manage events, clinic events, from a more clinical level, utilizing the, also the software system with the state, the NIS system, the data report, front-line system, and a liaison between our office and DPH during the clinics that are needed for the pandemic. Ideally, this contract is running, now, at the end of June, as Kozinski mentioned, with the option of renewing at the end of that period. We foresee this pandemic in the vaccination part, I should say, potentially running all the way through the summertime, depending on the phases and how many people are vaccinated. It's, there's some moving targets here and there, so we anticipate going well into the summertime, if not into the fall of 2021. So we would definitely need onboard services of a pandemic nurse to assist in this very time-intensive endeavor, an important endeavor. And Susan seems to have the background as well, talking to her, she seems to be very eager to help run these clinics, and she's a challenge. So, the idea is she could be starting on the 17th of this month, witnessing the first responding clinics that we actually have in town, or in Franklin, I should say, so she can get an idea of how these clinics are actually run, and then, you know, begin to organize our Milis clinics.
Okay, great. We have any questions from the members of the Board?
None for me.
None for me.
So, at this point, what we're asking for is the Board to approve or authorize the this pandemic nurse agreement, for a temporary nurse to run through June 30th, with the opportunity to renew, hopefully, if we need her. Now, this is not the first addition to your Board of Health staff to deal with COVID, right? I mean, just so the community understands, not only is the staff in the Board of Health, you know, working above and beyond the call of duty, and in the Health Department itself, we also have personnel doing tracking and those kinds of things, right, John? I mean, it's a multi-dimensional effort here.
Yes, absolutely, Chairman McCaffrey. We have contact tracing going on with a nurse, two nurses actually, one volunteering entirely and one being paid for the CARES back, and they're doing quite a job, because it is, again, a labor-intensive, if you will, task to track any positives in town or isolation quarantine, and stop, you know, clusters from happening. And these are not stopping, even though we're getting vaccinations now, these, this contact tracing will not subside anywhere in the near future. And I know Kathy's on the line, and she can probably add to that as well. They're still seeing people come in, and they will see contact tracing probably well into the late spring or summer.
I'd like to add, we also have had the help of the Fire Department. We have a nurse, paramedic, who's also been assisting us, so the Fire Department is instrumental in both the contact tracing, and will be even more so with the vaccination clinics.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to take this little opportunity to make sure the community understood that there's efforts going on every day to try and help our citizens weather the storm here and get through it, and to support the public health of the citizens of Milis. So this is a thank you to the Health Department, the Fire Department, all others who were involved in this effort, and this is not the first time we're going to thank you, nor is it the last time, but we do appreciate all this effort. So with that, I ask for a motion from the Board to approve the appointment of Susan Sullivan. Oh, no, you want us to just approve the pandemic nursing services agreement with Susan Sullivan, is that what we want?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you actually both ratify her appointment to the temporary position and authorize the Board of Health to execute the agreement on behalf of the town, on behalf of the Board.
So can I have a motion to that effect?
I move that we grant, in a contemporary pandemic nursing services agreement with Susan B. Sullivan, to be negotiated by June 30th, 2021, beginning February 17th, as well as authorize the Board of Health to execute the agreement for the individual with pandemic nursing services.
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
And that motion is carried unanimously. So, thank you very much for bringing it forward, and hopefully, that'll be another piece of the foundation here to help us move forward. Really appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a hearing scheduled for 7 o'clock, which we're not going to go early on, because it's important to keep the time, but we do have a slot here, and this is an opportunity, I think, if we could, yes, our Rec Department Director is on the line, so we'd like to, I'd like to ask, Chris Fogarty, to talk to us a little bit about the, her project here that she is spearheading, the Project Smile campaign.
Hi, thank you. I know you're on a time schedule, so I will go as quickly as possible. So we'd like to start a project in honor of Mental Health Awareness Month, which is in May, for, we're calling it Project Smile. What we'd like to do is get permission from the Board and the schools, whoever the powers that be, to inspire local artists in town to do a, they're all around the place. So, for example, I sent you some pictures, just positive reinforcement murals on town buildings, and again, we're going to open it up to, with your permission, to local artists to submit pictures of, say, you know, the wings behind you, or blowing, you know, flowers, or wobbles, or something. There's so much negativity out there, and this is just something that inspired me to, rather than have negativity out there, put the positive images, encourage people to walk around town, by our buildings. I'm actually working to see if maybe local businesses will allow us to put the murals on there, and I just, it's, I think it's a great project for our town. I just, I didn't know where to start with you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like a really interesting and exciting thing to do, brings the community together, leverages our local talents. I see from some of the back and forth, that the Fire Department is eager to have someone post in there, on the Fire, in the Fire Department, and to support the artists. I don't know what the police are waiting for, but fire guys got out there, out in front.
Well, truth be told, I didn't, I didn't ask the Police Department to put one on their building, only because it kind of needs to be like a brick building, that's a brand-new building, but the library is, that they do have the stone there to kind of paint this.
Town Hall would be great.
Town Hall would be great.
So I think that that's probably something the Board could get behind for Town Hall as well.
Yeah.
So, I have heard from the new superintendent, and he was all about it, and I spoke with him, we would get in contact with the school art department, see if any of the kids wanted to submit something, and obviously, everybody would be involved. I don't know if you guys want to be part of the, you know, judging or approval. Yeah, I'm really excited.
Elevate that to one of our members. We're not in a meeting to approve a piece of artwork. Whatever we can do to help, I guess that's what I think would be the best way for us to participate, and certainly, if it's to authorize the Rec Department to go forward and do it, and I guess we would have to vote to allow it to happen on Town Hall, but I think this is something that we could certainly support wholeheartedly, and it's a great idea, and it just, it's great to be coming forward with these ideas, you know, as the negative issues are around us, there's disease, there's snow in the forecast, there's ice. Hopefully, never mind. All right. Comments from my colleagues on the Board?
I just wanted to say that I think it's a great idea. I'm all about it, and I will do whatever I can to assist. I'm really looking forward to it. I think we have a lot of, a lot of fun things coming up, in terms of, you know, people showing some artistic ability, and, you know, doing a few beautiful things. On Sunday, the library is going to be putting out an installment for Project Cozy, which is going to have yarn things outside, so I think that, and then coming, going to this plant, the Bureau, and having people locally, local artists participate, I think that's great. So thank you for bringing that up.
I likewise. I was reading what you wrote over the weekend, looking at the pictures, and then all the comments that were coming in. This is something that I feel we have to be behind, and I, for one, absolutely support it. I think it's a terrific idea. I love the idea that it's engaging so many people in the community and hasn't even kicked off yet, and that's just great. And it makes you, it does make you smile when you look at these things, and that's terrific. Under these conditions, anything that makes you smile is worthwhile, but at any rate, I'm all for it, and I think it's a terrific idea, so I'll, if I can assist in any way, and I'm not very artistic, I'm happy to do so.
Your support is priceless, so thank you.
I will happily judge. I would love to judge. I love it. Mr. Chair, I don't know for the viewers, if anyone's watching from home here, that if you've traveled anywhere to any of the big cities, especially, I'm thinking Nashville especially, you go and stand in front of these angels' wings. I know, I should have put it, see how she's showing her daughter standing in front of the wings? It's really cool. They do this in a lot of cities, and people love, people wait in line to stand in front of these things. It's just a really neat thing. So, thank you.
I guess that what you're asking us to do is to vote to approve it?
Authorize, yeah.
And help with the launch?
Yes, please.
I think the Board should take, should consider being the sponsor for whatever art happens on the Town Hall, but we'll get back to you on that one. What does the motion mean?
I did reach out to, once the park chief said that their local union was going to support their particular mural. I did reach out to our union, and the president said, you know, once you get, you know, the approval, then we'll move forward with that, so. And I've reached out to a bunch of sponsors, we will get some money, it's more like paying for the materials, is what we want to do. So, anyway, we start somewhere, so.
Be happy to work with the union in the building to help with funding or whatever, to make sure that this is successful for Town Hall as well. So, I could take a motion then to approve this project?
I, Chairman, I'd like to move that we approve of Project Smile and have it go forward, and particularly with respect to Town Hall. Again, I have no objection, I think it's a great idea.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, for the Board to approve the launch of Project Smile, Project Smile campaign led by our director, our Recreation Department Director. So I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Just a quick. Thank you. Okay. The next item we have on our agenda is a hearing to consider that for stormwater and land disturbance permit for it on Orchard Street. The way this will, this is a formal hearing, so the process here is the applicant will present the application, we will take questions from the Board, we will take questions from the public. Following those questions in that dialogue, we will adjourn the hearing, and then meet immediately thereafter to vote on the permits. So I would ask that I get a motion from a member of the Board to open the hearing with respect to the land disturbance and stormwater, I'm sorry, stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit for the property of 376 Orchard Street.
I move that we open the hearing for the stormwater management and land disturbance applications for 376 Orchard Street.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded, open the hearing. I'll poll the Board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Germain?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So, we have Mr. Merrick in here, we also have Melissa Ricos, our Towns Engineer, who's reviewed the material and has submitted comments as part of the process for this application. I believe, Mr. Merrick, that all butters have been notified, is that correct?
That is correct.
So butters have been notified and made aware, and there's been a newspaper published ad also indicating that the Board would be considering this matter tonight at 7 o'clock. So, with that, I would like to ask Mr. Daniel Merrick, who represents the applicant, to introduce this application to the Board and make any comments regarding it that he'd like. Mr. Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Dan Merrick with Legacy Engineering. This evening with me tonight is Drew Hotten. Drew works for me, he's worked for me for four years now, and we're trying to get him going on making some of these presentations, so I can take some evenings off. So Drew is going to present to you this evening, and I'm going to stand here and enjoy So Drew is gonna present to you this evening and I'm gonna stand here and, uh, enjoy the show. Drew's gonna give you an overview of the project and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Well, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Uh, just gotta share my screen.
Yeah, if you could just, uh, just restate your names for the records of the week. Have that on our minutes.
Sure. My name is Drew Hotten. I work for Dan Merrick at Legacy Engineering. Uh, so we're here on behalf of the applicant to petition the board for a stormwater management and land disturbance permits for 376 Orchard Street. And we previously submitted an application on August 4th of last year and withdrew that application on December 5th at request of the board. And we are now before you to submit this new application, or we have submitted this new application, uh, after having redesigned the site. So, uh, as a quick refresher on what this development is, um, the applicant is constructing a new five classroom, uh, building on an existing, uh, nonprofit school grounds. Um, what you see on the screen here is the previous layout that we had in our last submission. Uh, the new school building was located a little bit north of the existing buildings. Just had a looping driveway and a stormwater basin out in the back corner of the existing field. Since that application, the applicant has acquired this parcel of land right here, which has opened up, uh, new options for the layout. And this is what we have come up with. The building is located mostly in the same location as it was previously. Uh, it's just rotated a little bit and moved a little bit closer to Orchard Street. The driveway now connects both to the existing driveway and, um, a little bit further down here on Orchard Street. The driveway is proposed to be 20 feet wide, all gravel, uh, with a small paved parking area in front of the new building. For our stormwater management, we have swales on either side of this proposed driveway and they will, uh, direct runoff down to, uh, the stormwater basin, which is located in the same place as it was in the previous application. Um, and there are some pipes underneath the driveway connecting these two swales together. The, there are some wetlands close to this basin, which we had flagged. Um, just this kinda tip portion of the, the wetlands right here. Um, and our basin will remain outside of the, the buffers there, the hundred foot buffer. Uh, that's about it for the layout. Um, we have also provided a draft decision for the board's consideration. And if the board has any questions, I would be happy to answer them for you.
Um, okay, I'll just have a question that is somewhat related, just so that the board understands and the public understands. The building is, is going to be, uh, how, how high is it gonna be? Uh, he says five classrooms. How many square feet is the building?
Uh, it is, let's see, here. Nine thousand nine hundred square feet with patio.
So it's basically 6,000 square feet roughly and it's a one-story building?
Uh, yes.
And the, uh, the stormwater, um, is really directing from, it, it's dealing with the land disturbance by both the building and the new driveway, right?
Correct. The rooftop runoff is piped into the proposed swell.
Okay. All right, questions from the board?
Uh, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes?
Looking at this, does any portion of what you're doing infringe on the town of Sherburne? I noticed that the property lines seem to go very close to Sherburne and I couldn't tell in your last picture whether you actually do go into Sherburne or not.
No, we, the entire development is in Lewis.
Okay. Um, have you reviewed any of this with our DPW to understand if there are any issues there from their perspective?
Uh, I'd like to phone a friend, Dan, for this one.
Um, I did talk with, uh, Mr. McKay about the project and he did not indicate any concerns or issues with the proposed development of an additional building on this site. We're bringing municipal water and the current buildings are serviced by an onsite wall. We're bringing municipal water in and fire suppression to the new building. Um, and then there's an existing septic system that was recently enlarged to accommodate this building in particular. So everything is squared away from the rest of them.
And when I look at this picture, it seems to me there may be a home and I can't tell what it is, essentially a budding the property near the driveway. How far away is that located?
Uh, this building here?
Yes.
That is, um, another school building on the same property. I believe that one's the administrative building.
This, this is an old farm that was converted to a school. So the, the old farmhouse is now one of the, uh, school classroom and administration buildings. And an old garage was converted to a, a classroom building. There's an old barn there, but it's all part of the school.
Overall, I don't see any particular problem with any of it. Um, I assume you have gone through the conservation commission also and asked them if there are any problems with the, what you're proposing?
There's no conservation jurisdiction here. As, as Drew mentioned, uh, there's no water within a hundred feet of wetlands. So conservation commission has no jurisdiction. We're in front of the planning board for site plan approval. Uh, we anticipate wrapping that up tomorrow evening, hopefully.
Okay. Just asking because I know you're close and I wasn't sure if you were within the jurisdiction.
No, we're not.
Okay. That's all the questions I have at this time.
All right, Ms. Underhill?
Um, I actually don't have any questions.
Okay. Um, if I could just, uh, turn it to Melissa for a moment. Um, the board has received the comments from Beta with respect to the project. Um, and the Beta review of the material that has been presented by the developer, uh, to the, uh, the towns engineering firm. It's the same review for both the planning board and the select board. So, Ms. Ricos, could you just address the board with respect to the process and where we stand from the point of view of the Beta group?
Sure. Um, Melissa Ricos with Beta Group. So we've been reviewing this project for a few months now. Um, the initial submittal, um, and we submitted a, our first comment letter to the board on that and then the subsequent revisions, we revised and issued a second letter. Um, all of our comments were addressed in regards to, um, stormwater for this application. We've also been reviewing it for the planning board, um, as well as the board of health because, um, meet the threshold for the HIR permit. So through all three of those board reviews process, the, um, design is, is to address all of our comments. Pretty straightforward. Um, you know, they're building in a, in a existing field area. Um, and, uh, every, everything checked out. We did recommend three conditions, um, as part of our review and that is in our review letter on page three and four. Um, they're pretty typical to what we usually recommend, um, to you for conditions. And that's observation of the subs soils for the infiltration basin that's being constructed, um, writing an ASB to the board when it's done. And, um, that condition of the long-term O and M with the final signature of the owner operator be provided to the board prior to our occupancy and that all future parties are made aware of their legal obligations as far as operation maintenance costs. And, um, Dan did have me on the decision that he drafted and those conditions are all there. I haven't seen any issues with what this number.
Okay, so we have a, um, a permit decision draft from the applicant for the board to consider which incorporates the three conditions that you're talking about.
Correct.
So that's already been addressed, uh, from the point of view of the developer as well. Okay, um.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes, I do have one question. When I look at the swale, you're gonna have students there who don't know what the ages are. But it looks to me like the swales could end up being something I call an attractive nuisance. Is there anything about a worry that you've done to ensure that students don't end up playing or falling into the swales? I don't know how deep they'll be and whether they'll represent anything that the students may have a problem with.
Uh, the swales are very shallow. Um, and we've also designed it, the reason why it's on both sides of this driveway is so that when parents are coming in to pick up or drop off their children, um, the children don't have to cross over the swell or anything to get to and from the, the new building. But they're very shallow, um, and the children shouldn't be in danger around them.
Okay, I'm just thinking more when they're on recess, out playing, whatever. Okay, thank you.
Um, could you just clarify for me in terms of the, uh, entrance of the property? Currently, the, uh, the entrance of the property on Orchard Street is to the south of the building. Is that gonna be closed or is that gonna remain open?
Nope. The site will have two entrances.
So there will be two, you're retaining the existing entrance?
Yep. So the, uh, the new driveway is going to be one-way, um, along this portion up here. Uh, and then the existing driveway will be two-way, both in and out.
Okay, so there's two, there's two points of Bgress, or at least entrance into the property. Okay, so I understand. I mean, this, so, um, I'd ask then, um, is there any, are there any members of the public or any of butter on this hall who would like to make a comment about this, uh, project? Or has there any issues that they would like to raise at this time? Karen, do we see any names out there that?
We don't see anything. Feel free to speak up.
Yes, if you wanna speak.
I don't see anybody.
Okay.
Nope, you're good.
So at this point, um, if no further questions from the board and no comments from the public, we've had the comments from our, our engineering firm. Um, I would take a motion from the board to close this, uh, permanent hearing.
I move to be closed the hearing.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to close the hearing with respect to the stormwater management and land disturbance permit request from, for, um, was it 376? Sorry. I always have my paperwork nicely lined up and then it all starts to go awry as the meeting goes on. 376 Orchard Street. So it's been moved and seconded to close the hearing. I will poll the board on closing the hearing. Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So the next order will be, order of business will be to consider, um, the board's decision with respect to the application. Um, the, um, the requested vote by the applicant is to grant the stormwater permit and the land disturbance permit based on the findings, um, uh, that have been made at the hearing and also with respect to the language contained in the draft decision, uh, which is provided to all members of the board. So if there's no further comment, uh, I would take a motion to grant the stormwater management permit.
I move that we grant the stormwater, sorry, stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit for the proposed school building at 376 Orchard Street.
Second.
So it has been moved and seconded for the board to grant the stormwater management permit and land disturbance permit for the proposed school building located at 376 Orchard Street. And that, of course, is based on the findings described in the decision that we have in front of us and subject to the conditions enumerated in the decision document. So I will poll the board. Uh, Mr. McCaffrey, yes. Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you, uh, folks from Legacy and also our most important partner in crime here, the folks from, Melissa Ricos from Beta, who is, again, this, these are the kind of people, folks, that were behind the scenes making sure that, uh, the community is protected and everybody is treated fairly and reasonably. So thank you all for that.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You can come again if you would like.
Have a good night.
Night. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So the next item on our agenda, um, is a discussion of a couple of items, really. Starting off with the important report to us on the current status of municipal well testing with, as it relates to, uh, the town's efforts to monitor and remediate the PFAS, uh, situation in our drinking water. So, um, we do have some information that was provided to the board. I don't know, is it, Mr. McKay, are you there to sort of walk us through it? Or is there someone else you'd like? Karen, can you pull that here?
I can. Bear with me one minute.
So Mr. Chairman, I'll stop while Karen's pulling it up. Uh, as you know, we've been testing for PFAS for the past six months. It's a evolving, um, situation. It changes monthly. As Betsy and Kirsten and Ron and Didry and Dave can tell you every Friday afternoon, it's a, it's another saga from our reporting laboratory. The numbers for testing haven't gotten any better. Um, we see the report, I can go through that for you.
Okay. Um, there it goes.
There you go. So as you can see, we started testing on 8/19/2020 and that was our wells one and two. And, uh, Multi One, Multi One is a blended system that takes the water from both wells one and two and treats both of them and distributes it into the, uh, distribution system. Um, right around September, we took well one, two and Multi, Multi One offline because that, uh, registered at 20.89. Uh, it's been off since then and it will remain off until, uh, we come up with a plan of, of, uh, treatment for that, for that plant. Um, if you look down to the next group and that is well three, well three, it's in yellow because we test for that monthly. We're required to do that by the Mass D E P because this regulation isn't in place as we speak. Uh, there's one report that's still out there. As you can see, there's four, but we have been testing it monthly. And at the last testing, it went up to 13.5. Although 13.5 is well below the 20 pots per trillion, it's still, um, it, it, it's a noticeable trend that all these numbers have stayed the same. So eventually this, this plant, to keep it, um, in good standing, is gonna eventually need, uh, some sort of treatment, um, down the line. The next one is well four. We only have to do that quarterly. And the reason for that quarterly, because it's below 10 pots per trillion. And, uh, the first round we did was at number four, you know, it was four pots per trillion. And then in the last one that we just did in, in January, that went up to 6.71. So that's also hitting that, almost that threshold of almost gonna have to be testing on a monthly basis. And when you get into that, it's just, you know, you never know what's gonna, um, what, what's gonna bring in testing. Uh, well five, when we first originally, again, let, let me go back. Uh, the pain treatment facility, that's another system that can be blended and, and treated and put into the distribution system. But, um, because of the size of the wells and because of regulations, we very rarely, actually, I'll tell you, we would never run both wells five and six together. actually, I'll tell you, we've never run both wells five and six together. It's probably better that we don't. So we do, the reason why I put them separately, because that's how they're tested and that's how they're reported to the DEP. When we first started off, that was a quarterly testing, testing at 4.5 pots per trillion. And then in January, it just spiked with no explanation whatsoever to 16.16 pots per trillion. That was a Friday afternoon that we all shared at, you know, between five, six, seven o'clock at night. And then we retested it and it came back at 9.95 pots per trillion. Can't explain it and I don't think Kirsten or Betsy can explain it either. We just can't figure out how you can go and drop that much with, in less than two weeks, two, three weeks. It doesn't make sense. And I'll get into that in a minute, you know, what we're looking for. Well number six, well number six has been off and that was a testing quarterly. And we took well six off because when we hit that 8.48 pots per trillion, we got very nervous that it was, if it goes over the 10 pots per trillion, we're gonna have to start testing that on a monthly basis. We are gonna put well six back on, that will probably be done this week. We just got, we just tested for bacteria and we're ready to, all those tests came back negative today, so we're probably gonna start that next week and retest O6G, well number six and take well five off because of the 9.95. I'd like to take it off while it's below the 10. Even with that 16.16 on 1/6/2021, I still believe they're gonna require us to test well number five on a monthly basis until we can prove, you know, it's continuously, you know, below that 10 pots per trillion. They just won't take that 9.95 pots per trillion and just say, okay, you go back to quarterly testing. All right, we'll see where we are. If we had to put O6G, if it's, if we have to put it on and it goes over the 10 pots per trillion, we will test monthly and we will leave it, leave well six on. The danger here, now we get down to the pot, you know, where the open blank, you know, any pot, when you get any reading of pots per trillion, you do quarterly testing. When you get over 10 pots per trillion, you are required to do monthly testing. And when it goes over the 20 pots per trillion, we have to take the well offline or come up with some sort of a treatment or some sort of, something that we're gonna do to satisfy the DEP and the general public. If it goes over 20 pots per trillion, that's their, that's the regulation and they deem that as a reportable and that's when we have to go to the public. And if you remember, that's why back in September, we took wells one and two offline and when someone calls up, and we get calls on this daily, if not more than one a day, because people are still very nervous about this and understandably so. When you get that report that came in the mail, you read it as many times as I've read it, I can fully understand someone being very concerned about, you know, their water. What concerns me is when you look at this chart and if you look at those things in yellow and you look at what we have in red and already offline, we're teetering with something, of a situation, if we take off any scenario, any scenario whatsoever with wells one and two offline and if we take anything else off, we're probably gonna be looking at trucking in water for the town of Milles. Because of the severity, we, it's just, there's not enough there. You know, this isn't back in the early 90s. There's a lot more homes, there's a lot more developments that have been built in the system. Well three is a very producing well. It's a strong well, it's not one of our biggest, but if we have to take five and six off, we'll have to look at immediate emergency treatment and we know that, Kirsten, get into that in a little while, but we know that emergency treatment, we get it, but it's gonna cost the town over $200,000, $7,000 just to get it to flip the switch. We know that the treatment truck that would come, it's $100-plus thousand, then we would have to have it plumbed in, we'd have to activate it. We're not sure if we would have to man it 24 hours, seven days a week with staff because it's an outside, you know, it's just an outside trailer truck that stands outside the wells. What our plan is, we are looking at, let me go back, I reached out to the state today, the grant that we applied for, they've accepted all the grants, they're looking at them and they're making the decision. I thought I was hopefully gonna have some news on that tonight, but I don't. And once I get it, believe me, you'll be the first to know and hopefully we will receive that grant. But what we're gonna do over the next couple of weeks, in my budget presentation on the 22nd, we'll get more in depth of what our plan is, you know, the two superintendents and Kirsten who have been working on this for quite a while and in our presentation of what's the next step for the Milles Water Department. And one of it in being is gonna have to be some solution for wells one and two and that would be a treatment, a new treatment facility for that, for wells one and two. Whether with the state grant or without the state grant, that has to happen. We cannot leave wells one and two offline indefinitely. And that's why we're trying to get something put together that we can look for the design money if the grant doesn't go through with the state. We'll look for the grant money, not the grant money, we'll look for the design money for wells one and two at the Maytown meeting with, hopefully with full design ready for a construction at the November Town Meeting and we can start building this treatment plant by this time next year. So, and what's the further plan? We are looking at, even if we get the state grant, we would still look for that money for further design plan for the entire system. You know, while you have somebody in here doing test borings, you know, they might as well do it at wells three and wells five and six. Well five and six, it's a tight constraint there. We have the, you know, we have plenty of land where the wellheads are, but if you know where well six is off a North Fork Road, that's a lot of that land's not ours. I mean, what you see with that white fence around it, that's it. That's all the land that's associated with that. Wells one and two, it's a little different. Most of the land is owned, well, it's owned by the DPW. I mean, I'm sure that the selectman would have to get into something of a, not a land swap or something like that, but most of that land is owned by the town of Milles. Well three, that's also in a very tight confined space that what you see, the buildings are what they are. The treatment plant and the wellhead are what, they're together. There's two separate little buildings, but they're encased in a fence area with a large propane tank that would, you know, for generator power. But we need to start looking at this, we have to start planning. So even with the grant, we're probably gonna propose at my budget presentation, funding to look at the whole scope of, you know, looking at all four treatment plants. I gave you a cost of, these tests cost $542 per test and there's two of them, I'm sorry, that's for both. So if we test well three, there's two samples taken at well three, a sample, so that's $542 and that was not in the budget. All this testing was not in the budget. The DEP paid for the first rounds and now we're paying for all of that after that. We will get in a few minutes, engineering costs for assistance with this is gone through the roof and Kirsten will explain, you know, a contract that we're gonna talk about for seeing us through till at least through June 1st. The water budget, it's okay, it's, as long as nothing breaks or nothing breaks down, but I've reviewed that with the town administrator and the finance director and we believe that we should be able to get through this budget season with some additional adding of cost to help us through this PFAS situation. So that's all I have on the numbers. And again, I would ask the general public, if anybody's watching, people have been, you know, not understanding at all, but after, I think after we talked to them, they understand it a lot, you know, a lot better. You just go to www.milles.org and all the information, all these test results, every month, every post, once we get them, it's put online, we update it anytime we get, you know, results and they go to the water department and there's this whole section with PFAS with all the information and any questions? For me and then Betsy wants to talk about, not Betsy, Kirsten wants to talk about a little bit of the design.
Okay, let me, just for purposes of the discussion for, not only for the board but for members of the public who may be listening in, the thing that is somewhat striking about this, of course, is that these wells that we're talking about are not exactly co-located. In other words, there's a pretty good distance between some of them. So maybe, which leads to the vexing question, of course, is where is the pollution coming from? Maybe if you just take a minute or two and just give folks generally where these wells are physically located so we can get a, everyone can get a sense of the fact this is, I mean, from my perspective, the red we knew about and the geography there, it may be more explainable. But now with these yellows coming up in what are dispersed locations, this is concerning to me.
Great question. So wells one and two, just for everyone knows that, at Seven Water Street, that's right, right at the DPW building. They're, the DEP is assisting us, you know, they've been great through the, you know, when I say great, I mean, they've assisted myself, the town administrator, it's not, very frequently, we get a phone call from Mary-Ju Pugsley, I think Mike got one this morning from her, you know, updating us on information. She calls me, you know, I would say every other week, update us on what they're trying to do to locate sources of what PFAS is. They have located and pinpointed a couple of locations around wells one and two, but I think we'll wait till, I don't think we should get into the discussion about that yet till town council advises the board on that information. It's good news for us, but, you know, let town council get, you know, discuss that maybe in an executive session at first. Well, well number three is off Bridge Street, which is near Village Street, it's well into the woods. What's surrounding that, let's don't forget, I mean, there's, there's a lot of gun clubs in that area and PFAS, there's ammunition, there's, you know, it's ammunition. Is it coming from there? We have not and that's part of the study that we would look at for like a well three because they're not, they're assisting us on well one and two because it's, you know, because it is offline and they're pretty prominent facilities that they can target for that. Farm land down there over the years, well number four is up at South End Farm and one would think that that probably would have been the ones that, the numbers would have gone through the roof and look at, they're the lowest because that is all farm land. Wells five and six, that's downstream, it's pretty close to the Charles River and the two wellheads are, they're close to the, right on, almost on the Charles. So are they pumping from the Charles and it's something that's coming downstream on the Charles? You know, we will investigate that to see if that's the case. If it's something upstream of our wells five and six.
And I have one other question that's with respect to the test results for well number five, particularly because of the, and you mentioned, you touched on it earlier, there's dramatic difference between, the other ones are, if you look at the data, of course, it's disturbing on well number one, then it jumped the way it did. It looks like the problem is more well number two, but from 4.5 to 16.6, this is on well number five and then back down to 9.5. Is that an anomaly in the tests or?
Yeah, that, as I said, that shocked us and I'm sorry, I did say I was gonna get back to that, that shocked us. And the first report I got, it was for another town and this was on a Friday afternoon, like I said, six o'clock, and they told me it was about 30.9. And at first I always had the big one and it was like, because we thought we were gonna have to take it offline right away. And then I got this, 16.16. We are looking at other laboratories to see if, and that's what my peers are telling me to do. There's only so many labs that are licensed to do this type of testing and they see a lot of fluctuation in a lot of these tests and when I asked my group, you know, do they see this? And they said, oh, that's nothing, that's, they can see fluctuation going triple that and then back down to nothing. So I am working with Kirsten to see if there are the laboratories that are more stable and we'll try them, you know, maybe not in that general, but you're right, 16.16 to 9.95 in less than two weeks. That doesn't seem right to me.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ken. Mr. Jermaine, you have questions you'd like to ask or?
I do have a question, otherwise I appreciate the presentation, at least it clarified a lot for me. On well one, I know you've taken it offline, yet it's technically not, it's technically not something, as I understand it, that has to be taken offline. Is there a reason we took it offline?
Because the manifold system, the way it's built is well one and, wells one and two and Multi One, they both come from the wells and they dump into the, into the wet well. We are looking at to try to put new VFDs in there to slow the process or to raise the pumping process, all of them up. Both of those wells, they were both cleaned, I would say about maybe 10 years ago. You know, the airstripper was cleaned not that long ago, so there would be more work to look at, to do that. It would be an expensive process and it is something that could be a solution for the time being that we are definitely looking at.
Okay, I guess what I, what you're telling me in essence is you can't take one offline and not the other, they're sort of linked together, is that basically what it amounts?
When they both, it's because of the VFD and the pumping system, but yes, they actually can operate like wells five and six and we're looking at to do that right now.
What does a V, what is a VFD?
VFD, it slows the pumping rate of a motor, it raises it, lowers it and instead of just like slamming shut when the well goes off, when you close the wellhead off, it slows the process of the, like the gate shutting the wellhead off. It doesn't hammer it.
Thank you.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes, I have a few questions. So how, how does testing happen where it could go down without treatment? So I know that we've all been talking about well five because, you know, that seems to be a strange one, but even if you look at well three, that was, you know, 12 point something and then it went down to 11 point something. How does that work?
Yeah, so I can't explain that. You know, we thought it was, you know, it was so dry, remember during the 10, the 12, it was a very dry until very recently. So we thought, oh, maybe, you know, if the ground saturates more, you know, we're not gonna be sucking down, you know, lower into the basin itself. And that's why I say it could be a fluctuation in just the way the laboratories. I mean, the testing of this, I should have Ron come here and tell you how he prepares to test and this is no lie, Kirsten can back me up. Most people that do this testing, they don't brush their teeth in the morning, they don't floss their teeth, they don't put deodorant on, they don't bathe, they don't, any of the type, any SOB type system can contaminate or fluctuate those, that testing as they're putting it into the bottle. Brush it here, it's, I'm sure Ron loved that, that I just told everybody he has.
I can also, I would guess I would say that you collect a field blanks every time, so there is quality assurance measures that are taken to make sure that it's not just an accidental contamination by the environment or, like you said, somebody's shampoo or whatever is whatever. So that is a precaution against a false, you know, result. And all the field blanks have come up zero that I've seen so far. As far as something changing from 12 to 11 or 13, I mean, there is inherently, it's inherently variable when you're collecting. inherently variable when you're collecting a sample of groundwater from the environment or anything from the environment. You know, it's, it's not a laboratory environment, it's not a homogeneous system, so you, you should expect some degree of variability. The change from the June sample at well five, at 4.5 and up to 16.9 wasn't, that surprised me. And I've been plotting this on a graph to look at trends, and all the trends are going up, so I'm not, it is puzzling, is my reaction to it. Also, I guess I will say that PFAS is so prevalent in the environment, they're finding that it's in rainfall, in low levels, but like around five parts per trillion, it's not uncommon to see in rainfall. I've seen groundwater impacted by systems in other towns, that's been in around 10, 11, 12, 15, with no other obvious sources. You know, if there's a spill or a release from an industrial site, you would expect to see much higher results, but the numbers in the teens and, you know, around 10 to 20, I think that could be indicative of sort of an ambient level that we're seeing in this part of the world. And I, you know, one of the things I advocate for is that the DEP do more investigation into where, what is, what are ambient groundwater levels in eastern Massachusetts in general, you know, where is this coming from? So, just a comment on that.
I did have one more question. And Mr. McKay, you did kind of speak to this, sort of, but I'm going to ask it in a different way, just, so where are these, you did discuss where these wells are located. So, are any of them, any of these wells in, I mean, I'm thinking especially the one on the way into Norfolk, are they close enough to other towns where other towns have wells that might have been tested, and do we know anything about that?
Thank you for asking that, because if we all, our Wells five and six, the wellheads are way into the woods, so if you look where Tangerini grows up, the farm right there, back of the building, they're about three quarters, if not a mile and a half into the woods, and it's pretty close, right online with, when you go that far in, it's almost in Medfield.
Okay.
Not there, but it's close to it. But less than almost a mile or two miles upstream from that, on the Charles River, pretty close to it, is Norfolk's building there, brand new well. And I have not got what those test results are there, and I don't, it's not online yet. So I don't know how, I'm sure they are testing for it. So I have not heard, most of, I don't think, don't forget, Millis volunteered for this early testing, most of these other towns are now being forced to do the testing. So they're all scrambling when they get these results back, so I don't know what Medways or Medfields, I don't even know if they're tested yet for it.
I bring this up because if it is, if it is a situation where, you know, again, I'm not an expert in this field, but like, if it's a situation where the proximity to our wells versus another town's wells are close, and we're all having the same issue, is there some way we could deal with a, I don't know, filtration system or whatnot between multiple towns if we're all being impacted in the similar fashion from a similar source?
Yeah, I'd like Kirsten to answer that, but yeah.
Sure, I'm not aware of other, I mean, I know that Medway has done some testing, they've, their levels have been below 10. I'm looking at a map as I talk to everybody, I'm not aware of any of your other neighboring towns, although I do, I did hear that Dover is doing testing of private wells, I believe, but I think they are just starting to discuss that. But, you know, I understand what you're saying, and just how sort of a regional solution would make sense if that were the case, I don't think anybody's close enough and similarly impacted that it would make economic sense right now. But in Massachusetts and in really the metro west area or the central part of Mass, a lot of, a lot of communities are. If you go on, Mass DEP has a, on their website, if you Google Mass DEP PFAS, you'll be able to find a map of all the towns and water systems that have been impacted and that are either having to take wells offline, install treatment, it's more than two dozen systems. It's, in Massachusetts, it's a lot, and a lot are in this sort of part of the state. So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask one more question.
Sure, Mr. Jermaine.
As I note the testing here and the cost, I think, you said the cost for each test was $5.42, and then you said, well, no, it's really, that was for two tests or something. But I'm not going to get too concerned there. Suppose we, for a few months, sent our tests out to two different labs. I realize there's a cost, but considering what we're about to have to pay for these systems, if we got two labs giving us the same results, at least then we'd have a basis for saying, okay, we've got a baseline, makes some sense. But if the two labs end up with results that are somewhat, or let's say, somewhat significantly different, that also leads to some concerns on my part, but I would just like to suggest that we, and I know that it's not in your budget, but we'll look into that, but.
I definitely would, and see, the only problem with that, every time you take a test, now, somebody has to report it, it has to be reported to the DEP.
Sure.
So, I can talk to Mr. Boswick about that and see what, you know, what his, I don't think, I think it's, you know, a pretty good idea, or we just take these next round of samples and find another, I know you Mass, I believe they do.
No, we don't.
No, they don't?
No.
Okay.
There's only two labs in Massachusetts certified right now, there's another one in southern New Hampshire, Portsmouth, and then there's others that you can mail.
You can ship it to Texas, and there's a lot you can ship out, you have to box them up and ship them out.
Okay.
Well, at any rate, I just think.
I will, I will look into it, Mr. Jermaine, and absolutely, I think it's a good idea, I'm not, I think it's something worthwhile to look into, and, you know, I could talk to Kirsten about this.
Thank you very much.
Yep. And just to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just to closing, we're going to have a much more, Kirsten's going to explain to the enterprise committee on Thursday night, I think you can all tune in, I mean, you don't have to have a meeting if you want to hear. The only reason why I want to do it to them first, you know, I talked to the chair, and she's going to present what we, what the solution is of the treatment that we've come up with, and with an estimated cost. Not that we're hiding anything from you, but we think we should go through the, if you've disagreed, please let me know, we thought it would be best to go through the enterprise committee, and then they can come back, you know, hear it, and then come back with their findings to the board.
No, I'm fully supportive of that approach. We're going to have to come to terms with it, but frankly, to have several sets of eyes taking a look at this, even if it's multiple testing, or there's judgments that have to be made here. So we all realize that this is potentially significant issue. Both with respect to public health, which we're clearly committed to make sure that we do everything we can to maintain that, but also to create some reasonable, reasonably cost-effective mitigation strategies to help us with this. It's, as I indicated at the last meeting, or maybe it was the meeting before, I think a couple of us attended the session that the DEP offered on this PFAS issue at the Mass Municipal Association, and the one thing that was absolutely clear is there was going to be no movement off the 20 parts per trillion. So, that is the standard, and that's the one we have to deal with. The part that we've talked about before, and I think we're preparing some correspondence to our legislators, is to say, you know, if the state finds a way to find some funding to help communities with these remediation issues, it would certainly be helpful, and it's not just Millis's problem, I guess it's what we're learning and what you all are reinforcing for us. It's a regional problem. And to force communities to solve them, you know, every man for himself, seems pretty unreasonable, anyway. So we will continue to raise this issue with our legislative delegation as well, as well as we've already talked to folks about litigation with respect to potential source of PFAS contamination, when we've joined, we've wanted to join the lawsuit against 3M, so, you know, the community, I understand we're trying a multi-dimensional response here, but not to sacrifice the public health, that's for sure. Okay, so I guess the next item on the agenda, though, is, it really relates to support to continue this process of review and testing, is that correct?
That's correct. So, again, the budget can handle it as of right now, and I'll turn this over to the town administrator, because it's a contract that he's going to sign. When we originally started this process, you know, we thought we were going to be at, you know, $10,000, $15,000 through the, through this, and like I said, we're already into it, only, you know, six months, and we still have, you know, six months to go for support, or Kleinfelder's support. You know, as much as they help us, I mean, they don't come for free, and there's a fee that, you know, we have to pay for this. And I can assure you that we get the best service, you know, on this, Kirsten is there, Saturday Sundays, anytime, you know, Mike reached out and she assisted us with writing the letter, you know, and supporting to the state reps. So, I'll let, if Kirsten, if you could just go quickly through your, the budget.
I will, yeah. Echo. I put together just a couple of slides, instead of looking at this boring little contract form, I hoped I could just share a couple of bullet points that explain basically what.
Yes, please do.
Represented by the change order. Okay, great. Oh, it says I can't share.
Oh, I have to stop sharing, sorry. There you go. I'm sure you have more interesting material.
That's a little interesting, not bad, I think. But, well, this slide is really kind of a summary of what Jim already covered, but basically just the status of the situation is concerning. There's the trends that I show in the graph there, you can see, are kind of alarming. So, what we've been doing to help the town out over the past, well, let's see, since October, there's been quite a lot of activity, so the change order contract that you have before you tonight is representing some of the past work already accumulated from October through January, and these are the types of things we've been helping out on, you know, some of the discussions with DEP during the fall when the well had to be taken offline, and Wells one and two, developing public information material and supporting with getting the public forum put on. And then, you know, as Jim mentioned, and we get these testing results periodically, take a look at the results with Jim, make sure we're putting them into a little database and tracking those trends, trying to decide what the data means. We put together another reapplication, updated the application for the Mass DEP grant that Jim mentioned, back in November. And then, as he mentioned, we've been trying to look at, okay, so what are the options for both either a short, you know, emergency, short-term, or interim treatment solution versus a, you know, permanent, long-term solution? So we've been working with a number of other communities, help them design treatment, permanent treatment where they've had to put in emergency systems, and now they're upgrading to a more permanent solution, so we're working on that with the town of Barnstable. And I will say, so we looked into emergency treatment costs, it's, they're not very well-established, I will say, so as Jim mentioned, there are a couple of systems, they have to be approved by the DEP, so there's only a couple of vendors that are offering sort of a mobile system if you had to put something in, in very short order, and that's going to be a very high initial cost, on the order of around a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then monthly costs look like they would be on the order of $10,000. So it's, it's not desirable to have to put those kind of sunk costs into something that's not permanent, right? So, that's one thing we've worked on, and then, as Jim mentioned, and that will provide more information to the enterprise committee, getting a very high-level budgetary number for permanent treatment costs at De Angelis, so this was all done before the well five situation came up. So we've been doing that, and those estimated preliminary costs, as I mentioned. And then trying to, you know, Jim asked me to look at what, you know, we don't want to come back every month and ask for more money, what would support the town through the rest of the fiscal year. So we just looked at the level of activity through the past four months and sort of projected a similar level of activity. I forgot to mention the GAF site where reports and sampling data are coming out, we have our LSP looking at that information as well. So, between now and the end of June, we anticipate providing some similar types of activity to support the town with PFAS and drafting that letter for state officials, for you to have as a starting point, to communicate with them on what's going on, reviewing the GAF information and the ongoing well testing information, and then further developing a more holistic approach to the, you know, now that well five may be in jeopardy, that's a much larger study, trying to understand where's the best investment of your dollars. So we wouldn't be, we aren't planning to perform that study under this change order, but to develop the steps in the process, the scope, and then obviously going on discussing with the enterprise committee and supporting Jim in those discussions. So, that's where we came up with the estimate for the next several months in the change order.
So, Mr. Chairman, as Kirsten stated, we thought we could handle this through, I mean, as the DPW director, I can sign up to $5,000, then the town administrator signs up to the $10,000, so I would ask the town administrator to, we're over that $10,000, we're asking for $10,000, so now we're going to have to.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gazinski.
Thank you. As the, as Mr. McKay had mentioned, Kleinfelder's working closely with us to try to stay ahead of this issue, and we'd like to be able to put together a contract that takes care of the really emergency services they've been providing to us since October in addressing this, as well as trying to establish a contract that will provide the assistance we need through the end of this fiscal year. So that's, that's the proposed contract amendment that's before you, in a total amount of $53,500. So I think Mr. McKay and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have in regards to this, and, you know, hopefully the board will support moving forward with us. Obviously, and unfortunately, this issue is going to cost a lot more than this as we move forward, but this will allow us the planning we need in order to prepare for the next days.
So if I may, this is a request for a change order to an existing contract, and obviously it's a much higher amount than the underlying contract, but it is targeted to PFAS or PFAS support, that's what this is all about, which you outlined for us. And if I'm not mistaken, roughly a third of it has already been done, is that right? I mean.
Right, that's correct.
The, from Kleinfelder have actually been performing these services all along, and they probably would like to get paid for it.
I imagine they would.
It seems to be that, but they like.
They've been acting in good faith up to this point, you know, we've worked with them quite a long time on stormwater and other issues, we did ask them to step into the breach with us as we confronted these issues, many of which unexpectedly. which unexpected to us, and helped us navigate through a difficult period, which we're going to continue to go through as we, as we work to figure out the scope of the issue, as well as the best methods of moving forward, to try to address this, through a lot of additional testing, whether that's through, you know, necessary design, construction of, of facilities, and also to help us as we try to work with state officials, including our legislators, and trying to get additional assistance for the town in addressing these really new issues for us based on the new requirements of the DEP on PFAS.
So, this, what we're asking for is, in terms of the actual letter, it's, it's for the eighteen thousand five hundred, which has already been done, and then not to exceed thirty-five thousand for work that we think we might have to do with respect now, again, to PFAS mitigation strategies through June 30th, is that right?
That's correct. So, it's up to that amount?
Yeah, this does not cover the testing itself. That's not part of it. This is just the professional services. Okay? Questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gazin, I'm sorry, Mr., I see you in the.
It's an occasional question. Mr. Gazinski, I have some questions. The eighteen thousand five hundred, were you aware of what was being spent on a monthly basis over the last several months?
I mean, I was aware that work was being done. I didn't have the exact amount on a day-to-day basis, but I, I was aware that work was being done to try to keep up with the issues that, that we were, that we were trying to address as the PFAS issue was developing.
My concern is that rather than looking at what our costs were on a monthly basis and what they were charging us, I'm not disputing in any way that they did the work, is, were we aware of what they were charging us and what it was costing us on a monthly basis as we move forward? Because we're suddenly being presented essentially with an eighteen thousand five hundred dollar bill.
The bills, the bills were submitted on a monthly basis.
They were?
Yes. In a time, time, when we get the bill, it gives exact, you know, what was, how many hours was spent on each tense?
Then I'll ask Mr. Gazinski, is there a reason we were not informed earlier before we are now facing an eighteen thousand five hundred dollar lump sum payment?
Well, I can't give you an exact answer to that other than to say it has simply been a lot going on in regards to this. So, that was probably an issue on my end, but again, it was not intentional, and it was a matter that, again, we were trying to keep up with. And we knew there were costs accumulating, but they were costs that we felt that we did not have a choice as far as needing to address.
Okay. In terms of task two, as they note, ongoing PFAS support, I see it's coming out at seven thousand dollars a month, which, as I can see it, is an estimate because they pointed out as they were going through that there was some analysis and other things that weren't included in here that would have to be done as we move forward. So, it's going to be even higher if we choose to have some of that done. Kirsten was very clear on that, that those things were not to be included. I, this is the first time I've seen it. I'm a little concerned, but I'd like to get more clarity, and I don't think we can get that tonight. I need to think about it. So, that's where I stand, is I'm, I'm a little concerned about this right now in terms of moving forward.
Certainly, if I may, the board has the option, I would, I would say the board could consider proceeding from here on a month-to-month basis, if that's how you prefer, that's certainly doable. The board could get, you know, a monthly update on the billings moving forward, and we could just simply put additional change orders moving forward on a monthly basis if the board would rather that approach moving forward on this. So, that's not a problem at all. If that, you know, that way you'd get a monthly update on the, on the work and the billing attribute.
I would, my preference would be not just a monthly update, but an idea in advance of what is anticipated for a month, so that we can decide if we want to proceed in a particular direction. I am concerned about, as I'd say, billing in arrears as opposed to knowing upfront, here's what is intended, here's what we plan to do, here's the cost, and if we ever, if we're going to exceed that, you notify us in advance, as opposed to, okay, we've done this, now we're obligated. So, that's my concern.
Is Underhill?
Yes, I think I have a couple of questions. It feels sort of insignificant, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around this a little bit. In the letter, it says something about how the original fee was ten thousand dollars, and then the requested change is fifty-three thousand five hundred, which brings the amended total to sixty-three thousand five hundred. When I'm looking down at the breakdown between task one and two, where is the other ten thousand dollars? Because eighteen five for task one and thirty-five for task two is fifty-three five, not sixty-three.
It was part of change order one, already approved, yeah.
Oh, okay.
From earlier in the year.
Okay. And then, second, looking at this documentation, the contract piece specifically, has town council already reviewed this? Would it, would it have been like town council reviewed the initial one, and this is just an amendment to the initial ones, they don't?
Correct. We usually don't have town council review these types of change orders on a regular basis. It would be the base contract.
Okay, okay. I mean, I, I think we're, I think we have a lot to deal with here, which is kind of an understatement, from, you know, the, the water issues themselves to mitigation considerations, to treatment considerations, to professional services. So, it just, it, it really does sound like just a, a lot at the moment. I, I'm kind of torn, but the idea of the month-to-month sounds appealing, I think, but I'd be interested in hearing other people's thoughts.
Well, I'd just like to weigh in. From what I understand, and correct if I'm wrong, we in fact do receive a monthly invoice from Kleinfelder, is that right? So, the consultant is providing us with a monthly invoice, which then, according to, I believe, Mr. McKay, it is reviewed by the town, and the town takes, so the town takes a look at the services provided to just confirm that in fact the scope of work described in the invoice, that was done. So, from my perspective, we're already operating on a month-to-month basis. Now, I'm, I'm not particularly, concerned is a, is a wrong word. It would have been, would have been better to know about this sooner, I guess from the contracting point of view. But the, but the fact of the matter is that the, you know, invoices were submitted, the work was done, the work was done, the invoices were submitted, they've been audited by the, the buyer, Department of Public Works. So, I, I think that we, personally, I feel as though we have every obligation to, you know, pay for these services that have been performed, and was indicated that it was done in good faith. And what, you know, this firm has been working with the town of Milis for a long time doing a lot of things. And that doesn't mean that it's not something that we should review, because we don't want to view sole sourcing kinds of contract work. But, as, from my point of view, this was work that is not quite emergency, but pretty close to it. Testing that we decided to do immediately showed that we had a problem, we needed to get our arms around it, and so from the point, from that point of view, I, I feel comfortable, I feel comfortable supporting the, the amount for the work already done. In terms of the work to be done, the way this is structured, it does say that it'll be invoiced monthly, it shall not exceed thirty-five thousand dollars, I think that's the right, that's the number. So, no authorization, and then we will be getting monthly invoices, there's no authorization to go above that amount. And hopefully, if we start hitting it, if we start running into an issue there, we, we as a board get notified sooner, not three or four months later. So, I personally am comfortable with approving this particular change order, but if the other members of the board are not, then we need further discussion, but I do think we should at very least address the amount that's already been done, the work's already been done in good faith by this, by this contractor.
Mr. Chairman, as I noted earlier, I have no problem, well, no problem with task one, it's an obligation, they've done it, we have an obligation, and that's where it stands. But, I do have a problem with the task two, and I'm much, I feel much more comfortable with a better understanding on a monthly basis of telling me, here's what we think needs to be done this month. We know it, you can't be clairvoyant by the same token, there's got to be a good understanding of where you're headed, and there are some things that aren't going to be covered in here, so we know it's going to exceed, in some cases, the seven thousand per month. But at least if we know upfront, we're in a position to say, okay, and when the end of the month comes, we'll have a detailed list of what actually was done. So, I'd prefer to go forward on a monthly basis from here on, as we begin to understand better what's happening.
Is you're suggesting that the monthly authorization is going to come from the board?
Let me put it this way, I don't mind which way we choose to do that. If the town manager, town administrator, I believe, has authorization for what, up to ten thousand dollars or something on a monthly basis?
Yes.
From that perspective, if we go on a month-to-month basis, it gives the town administrator the ability to pay for those monthly charges. But it would all, what I would say is that from then, from the board's perspective, and I speak for myself, I would like upfront, here are the things that are anticipated for that month, and here are the anticipated costs. And certainly, as the month progresses, there could be things that come up, but if they come up and they say, ah, we're going to need to spend an extra two thousand dollars, or whatever the amount is, that at least we know in advance, and the town administrator can make a decision together with the director of DPW as to, is this something we want to proceed with? And certainly, if it exceeds ten thousand, then we'll get involved. But, I think it gives a little more latitude, but it also gives us a chance to better understand what's going on. And certainly, as a member of the enterprise committee, it gives us some understanding of what's happening also on a regular basis.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gazinski.
Yeah, I'm completely comfortable with that approach. We can certainly do it that way and ask our friends at Kleinfelder to, to put together and to work with the town just to come up with a monthly work schedule on what's anticipated and the anticipated costs with that, understanding that it is certainly difficult to budget to the penny on these things, but at least we can provide an updated monthly schedule to the board on the work that's being done on, on PFAS by Kleinfelder, and provide an opportunity for the board to get a more detailed update every month on that work. So, as long as our folks at Kleinfelder can, can work with us on putting together a monthly kind of anticipated work schedule cost, we could certainly do that and, you know, notify the board on a monthly basis, and that way if there's any questions or concerns with the board, we can sit down in the future and talk about it.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a statement or ask a question regarding procedure? Thank you. Betsy Frederick, I'm with Kleinfelder, I'm working with Kirsten on this as well. Just so I, I understand the process that you'd like us to, to move forward on. Procedural basis, we, we could do, as Mr. Gazinski has just mentioned, the sort of outlining based on, you know, we're, we're doing the strategizing with Jim on a regular basis, and, and we have a pretty clear concept of what our, you know, near-term needs are for this. I just want to make sure that what we're looking at is sort of the equivalent of sort of an email correspondence level of, of effort, and not a, a new task order generated on a, on a monthly basis. I'm sorry for all the feedback, I think that's me.
I think it's Jim.
Okay. So, it, it, just, just on the basis of, of how you'd like us to operate, we could, you know, proactively.
One of the things you have to understand is whatever goes wrong, the chair gets blamed, okay? That seems to be the way that the operator proceeds, but okay.
Sorry.
Promote it up, promote, the problem is promoted up.
That's right. We'd like to throw the chair under the bus when we can.
So, I mean, to that point, I, I would just wanted to say that we are happy to put together what our strategy is for that monthly basis, and we can provide it to you as a written correspondence as opposed to generating another task order. That creates sort of a contractual issue on, on our end, that just becomes sort of an amplified trailing effort that we'd like to avoid. So, if, you know, we're more than happy to, to work with the way Mr. Gazinski has just described this, but I just wanted to make sure you weren't looking for a task order on a monthly basis, but rather just sort of a, you know, a proscriptive idea of what the work was going to entail.
Mr. Jermaine.
I have no problem with that, I'm not looking for a formal document, I'm looking for, these are activities we think that we anticipate performing this month with some estimate, and everyone knows, when you're dealing with a project on project management of any kind, if you have the activities, you know what things your durations are going to be, the cost estimates, and hours and so on, at least there's a quick estimate in there, we know where we're headed, and we have some idea. And it gives everyone a sense of, we know what's going to be happening, if you will, with deliverables, the targets for that month, and where we're headed. So, I don't have a problem, I certainly am not looking for a formal document of any kind, but a memo level, and I think if Mr. Gazinski goes along with it, that's all I would look for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, I would like to just throw out the notion, however, that the procedure for sort of advanced approval before the work is done, is not at all inconsistent with the change order that we have in front of us. Because the change order we have in front of us says, we're going to authorize some additional work with a cap, we're not going to spend any more than thirty-five thousand dollars, and if that's subject to, you know, a monthly preview of what the work's going to be done, I have no problem with that. But I, I don't want to give them, I don't believe, I believe we should have, as proposed by the contractor here, a not-to-exceed amount for the total additional work. If my colleagues are okay with that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
My only concern with that is that I believe Kirsten, when she made her presentation, pointed out a couple of things that they were planning to do, that they felt should be done, and they were not included in the price of the thirty-five thousand. That's part of why I'm a little concerned, and I think, and that doesn't mean they shouldn't be done, please don't get me, get that impression. I happen to respect both Kirsten and Betsy, but it sounded to me like the seven thousand a month may at times have to be exceeded if we wanted to get some of these other pieces of the project done that they have identified. That's why I'm interested in this.
Well, the contract doesn't say seven thousand dollars a month, they estimate it will be seven thousand a month, but will not exceed in any event thirty-five thousand. So, one month, nine.
To check ahead, sorry, the types of activities and the level of effort for this type of on-call, as-needed support, communication, review of documents, presentation at meetings. I mean, if the situation demands. I mean, if the situation demands that actual design assessment work gets done, that is not really anticipated in this, as you mentioned, but I haven't. But as far as I understand, we aren't planning to go down that road until July.
Well, okay, so I would, that's the way I understand this change order is for that consulting support.
Correct.
Lying with the work that we've been doing. If there are other work beyond the scope of this, which might be design work or some other level of monitoring or something, that's a different task.
Correct, yes.
And would require a different contract, because this contract is purely for consulting services.
Correct.
This effort. That's the way I... So I don't really, I don't see the risk of going above this, but I'm perfectly comfortable with Mr. Jermaine's suggestion that we would ask for, you know, a preview each month before we start work for the month. We can do that.
Yep.
I think we've all agreed that that's easy, and we will, Kirsten will notify me, I'll give it to the town administrator, and he can distribute to the board. Does that address the issue that the other members have raised?
Yes, I think that that makes a lot of sense, and, you know, it would, I realize the not-to-exceed, I realize the, I don't know, the rough estimate of assuming maybe 7,000 per month type of thing, but it would be good to see, to have a preview of hours or work anticipated for a month, so we know, so that we're not surprised if, you know, we get two $15,000 months or something. So I mean, it would just be, it would be good to keep some more proactive tabs on the project.
Well, from my point of view, I think that maybe what we're reacting to legitimately is, you know, the first 18,500. That wasn't really up to, contemplated in the contract, but nevertheless, it ran. And, you know, suddenly, from the board's point of view, we're presented with an $18,500 bill. What we don't want to do is have that happen again. We want to be ahead of the game. Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I would like to make a motion on this, if the board members are, for this particular, to resolve this, that we go ahead and approve the change order number two, is it? Change order two, in the amount of $53,500, subject to 18,500 is due and payable for work already provided, $35,000 is with respect to work to be done, and that work is subject to monthly prior approval by the town administrator before the work is done. And the letter does include a not-to-exceed amount for the total additional work of 35,000.
Second.
So it's been moved in second, and is there further discussion? All right, I'll pull the board members, Mr. McCaffrey, yes, Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I would ask that before we execute this change order, that language be included in the document with respect to the prior approval, because that's the condition that we set for accepting the project, and that's not contained in the material that we have.
Very well.
Is there another item here? Because we were provided with another document here relative to MS4 services. Is that something that we're supposed to be discussing tonight? Well, that was put on, actually, for the previous meeting, but actually, both of these were put on at the previous meeting, but it was so overloaded that they were removed. And somehow, this was removed. When Kirsten updated her PFAS, this was taken off. I don't know if the board will allow this to go through, or if you want us to come back in another meeting, we can certainly do that. From my perspective, it's not actually on the agenda, because the agenda reflects the PFAS change order and not this MS4 contract. Is there any issue that is, that would require work to stop or hold us up on MS4 compliance if we defer this to next meeting?
No, I mean, the issues with respect to that contract, Mr. Chair, the contract itself has actually already been signed and executed by the town, but by virtue of the choice to do a very sort of similar process that we've just described, which is sort of an incremental approval of contract value on a regular basis. We had gotten to the point where we were just, we were going to be working over the next four months on finishing this year's services, so we were trying to simplify the process by getting this change order approved for the balance of the work. We will be having to get restarted on all of this in the next two to three weeks, so ideally, if we could get this signed at the next board meeting, then we can certainly wait that long.
Well, okay. Personally, I would prefer to wait, because we're way over, and we have another item that we're supposed to be talking about at eight o'clock. I don't want to jeopardize the work, but this is really a separate task. And if there's changes to be made on a contract we've already signed, we need to, that needs to be highlighted, so board members can understand exactly where we are on this. Because we, this, so if we could do that, I would appreciate it. I know that requires you to come back again, but I'm sure there's no place you'd rather be than on a call.
No place like, no place like Milis on a Monday night.
We'll be talking about PFAS that night, too. Yeah, well, we're not suggesting these problems are going to go away. All right, so if it's all right with you, I'd like to schedule this for, this actual item for a meeting, for a meeting on the 22nd. Is it the right date? I can't, it is the 22nd.
Correct.
Thank you.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Side of we have on our agenda really is a board discussion over the possibility of taking some action by the town on the 61A property that has been subject to a purchase and sale agreement for a developer. What we, the board had asked was to get an explanation from the town administrator and the town council as to the exact process and procedure that the town would be required to go through, if in fact, we, the decision that we were interested in executing our, acting upon our 61A right of first refusal. So we have a document here, which is pretty comprehensive. Maybe, is Mr. Tallaman on the line? Is he with us?
Yes, he is.
Been waiting patiently?
Yes, he has. We're keeping him awake, apparently.
Patient. If you could just sort of, again, for the, we've had this discussion a bit before, but I think it's helpful for us to really focus in on the process steps here, if in fact, we decide to move forward with the 61A right of first refusal exercise.
So in terms of the process that you have before, so we're part of the way into the process, because they've submitted the notice, we've evaluated the notice. The select board, there's a number of forks in the road that the select board can take, and one of those forks is to do nothing and never exercise or never deal with it too much. Another task, another way to go would be to affirmatively waive your right of first refusal, which you could do. And then the third path would be, and that will open up other paths, would be to further consider whether or not to exercise your right of first refusal. So we're kind of in that third path, it appears to me, with respect to this property, because there has been some interest shown in acquiring the parcel that we've been talking about, in which case, you've already, again, accomplished some of the goals. You've circulated information out to the various boards that might be interested or not interested, as the case may be, in the property, and they've responded with respect to their interest. The next step, which is more, the public part of the process, would be to hold a public hearing, which would be required before exercising a refusal, and at which you would take comments, if any, discuss amongst yourself, hear from the public as to their likes and dislikes, and if in fact, after that process, it was determined that you wanted to purchase or at least exercise your right of first refusal, there's normally 120 days within which to accomplish all of that. That time period has been suspended by the pandemic, so we're not worrying too much about that. But at the conclusion of that public hearing, you decided to exercise your right of first refusal, you would exercise it, and you would send a notice, which would be recorded, but also sent it to the property owner saying you're exercising, you've chosen to exercise. You then have a period of time within which to do two principal things. One, arrive at a purchase and sale agreement with the property owner. That purchase and sale agreement must be for the same purchase price that they were going to sell it to someone else for, and that would be step one, so it takes a little bit of time to negotiate that. At the same time, you'd be scheduling that for a town meeting vote to appropriate the necessary funds by whatever means to purchase the property. Obviously, if town meeting decides not to, then you can't go forward, but if town meeting decides to do it, then you essentially move forward. The whole time period from exercise to purchase is essentially 90 days. It tends to get extended by terms of that purchase and sale agreement, but what we'd normally look to is between 30 and 60 days following a town meeting vote, and then consummate the purchase. So that is the kind of, the basics of it. There are always nuances, but that is the basis.
Okay, that's very helpful. And again, I think that the issue here for us, as you indicate, is if there seems to be interest, and we certainly had correspondence from the planning board, the recreation committee, and the conservation commission, that there is an interest in continuing to explore the possible purchase of this land, that the next step for this board would be either to decide not to do it, or if we decided that we wanted to pursue this, we would then be holding a public hearing with ample notice, plenty of time for people to take a look at it, make sure that everyone has the, you know, all the public has the information that they would be, find helpful to provide us with meaningful comments. And following that, then it would be up to this board as to whether or not to indicate service notice of interest, and then to put a warrant article on the program of the town warrant for action at the Maytown meeting. So that's kind of where we are at this point. I'd like to ask my colleagues at this stage of the game, you know, how they feel as to we should proceed, and because I think it is incumbent upon us, if we're going to move forward, to try to do so with some, both respecting the potential purchaser and the potential seller, as well as the community to, you know, do the necessary work to make sure that this is a reasoned decision by the town. Mr. Jermaine, you have some comments you'd like to make?
Not too many at this point. I mean, having reviewed the property, and looked into what our town council has to say and so forth, my feeling is we should proceed. I think it's something that would be very valuable for the town. I think it offers a lot of opportunity for a variety of functions. So my personal vote would be to proceed with this, and let's have some public hearings.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, you concur. All right, so I think that from the point of view of this board, then I would like to actually take a vote to indicate that the board would like to continue to pursue this opportunity, add to, with all due haste, schedule a public hearing to review with the community this possibility. But before we do that, I think we should think a little bit about the timing here, the date. As we know, these are times where virtual meetings are required, we need to be sure that we have the opportunity to make the community well aware of it. I think we're still going to have to have this on some kind of Zoom conference. I know the school committee recently held a meeting that I believe was successful using Board access, so I think that we should spend a minute or two sort of discussing when we might want to do this. I mean, there's a lot on our plate, but I think, well, I'll throw the, sooner or later in my book, but not so precipitously that we don't get enough opportunity to make sure the community is aware of it, because it has to be something that the community does know, and we would hope for a robust participation by community members, because we know there'll be some support, I mean, there'll potentially be some opposition as well, so. Any thoughts on the timing?
You don't think tomorrow at 9:00 AM is a reasonable period? Okay.
Well, it's going to snow, so I don't think you could...
Are there legal, are there like legal timeframes or something we're supposed to keep in mind, like before we have such a hearing, how much time needs to elapse between announcing it and holding it?
Aaron, it's interesting, the statute doesn't say how long. Some people said, oh, you should give 14 days, because that's what we're used to for like zoning hearings and this and that. Certainly, 14 days seems about fair. It doesn't have to be published in the newspaper, just has to go on the town website. There does have to be notice to the property owner. We think at least seven full days of notice is required, or is it viable? Probably should go with closer to 14 for a project that might generate some amount of interest in the public, but it's not required. No, there's no case that talks about how much notice, so we've always suggested seven days.
Mr. Chairman? My attitude is we worked a little backwards from when town meeting is in the event we take this to town meeting. And given that, we're into February, I figure, you know, by early March, we ought to have, in my estimation, something set up to at least allow a first go-around of participation by the town to better understand what's going on, what we're interested in, why, and hear inputs. I say that because there may be issues that come out of that meeting, that we want to hold yet another meeting, and obviously, you as chair will make those decisions, but my feeling is to give us the latitude with potential timing to do that, I think, is reasonable if we do it no later than very early March. So that would be my recommendation, is we get the word out and we schedule it for early March, but that's my view.
Ms. Underhill?
I'm fine with that timeframe as well. My only question is, I know we can add things to the warrant after we close it, but would we be putting some kind of placeholder on there prior to the 22nd when we close it? Or would we wait until after this public forum hearing to put it online?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes, I mean, it would be pretty straightforward for the board to put a placeholder on the warrant, and then make whatever changes necessary to that article once the discussion and public hearing or hearings on the matter are complete. So that would not be a problem. And certainly, you know, the board... And certainly, you know, the board could look to have something the first week of March, perhaps the first, which is a Monday, if that works for the board. And that gives plenty of time for us to post the meeting, you know, post a hearing and give the public ample notice of an upcoming hearing on the, on the property.
Okay, and so from my point of view, the first week of March is a very good target, I agree. Anything more, more aggressive, I think we run the risk of not giving ourselves enough time to really get the message out. So could be Monday, Tuesday, I mean, Wednesday probably not a good idea. That tends to be finance committee day. Tuesdays are often the school committee day. I don't want to preclude anybody who might want to attend by having a conflict. So again, we don't have a scheduled meeting for the first, but perhaps that would be a good day to target. Is that reasonable from my colleague's point of view?
I would agree.
I concur.
Okay, so I think that, I think we'll agree that March, we'll target March 1st, 7 o'clock, what time the people feel is that would be a good time. And again, this will be a virtual Zoom meeting, and we want to make sure that we do all whatever logistically we've got to do to make sure that we can, you know, host quite a few people, that we, we set it up so that we do that and we get the notice out to folks.
If it helps, I listened into the school committee public hearing forum that they did, and they had people submitting, you know, requests to speak, and everyone was given three minutes to speak. And at three minutes, they were told that their time was over and they were immediately muted. I think that only happened like once, maybe, for one person. But it's behind the scenes, we'd have to talk to them. I'm not sure exactly how they did it with the waiting room and lining people up to be able to speak, but it did seem pretty effective. I think my only personal concern would be for those that aren't web-enabled, maybe a way that they could, maybe we could open some kind of a, I don't know, suggestion box type of a, give us, you know, drop off your feedback or whatnot.
Yeah, I think that would probably be, we would try, we'll try to do that. I think that's what we've got to do. And we'll, we can reach out to the school folk to make sure we understand how they did it. And if there's technology they have that we don't have, maybe we could use it. I do, I do agree that we want to get the notice out, and we want to give people the opportunity to submit questions, whether by email or whatever. Or if they want to drop something off, that'd be fine, and we'll try as best we can to respond to those questions. But I think the first 7 o'clock is a reasonable time, if you all agree with that. So I think that's what we'll do.
Mr. McCaffrey, do you need to make a motion? You started making a motion, but no?
Yeah, well, I'm about to get to that.
Okay.
I think motion is going to be that the board agrees to set a public hearing to consider the purchase of the property on, the 61A property on Village Street on March 1st at 7:00 PM.
Second.
So that's the motion, moved and seconded. Before we vote, I would indicate that this is not, the board has not taken the position that we will move forward with the purchase. We have taken the position that we want to move forward to get additional community input before we make our final decision on whether to proceed. So with that, I will poll the board. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jermaine?
Yes.
Is under held?
Yes.
That motion is carried unanimously. So thank you, Mr. Talman, for helping us through this part so far. I'm sure we'll be relying on you as we move forward one way or the other. And hopefully we'll, you know, work hard to get the right level of community input so that we can make an intelligent decision to present to the town. But as was indicated earlier, this is an opportunity for us to consider the possible acquisition of some really attractive open space. Next item on our agenda is actually a couple of items that are related. This is now shifting to budgeting, and I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the areas of budget that may in fact be things the board wants to consider beyond just the level service budget. And secondly, to talk a little bit about this board's position with respect to the tri-board discussion on, you know, new methodology for arranging for, you know, the, the revenue sharing between the schools and the municipal side. So, Mr. Kuzinski, you have some items here that the board may want to consider. Again, we're not making any decisions here, we're just trying to look at direction. And as we all know, later this week, we will be meeting for the formal budget presentations by our departments. So this is a bit more of an overview. So if you could just walk us through a couple of these ideas that we have, we've discussed for consideration and for sharing with the public, and this would be, this memo would be good to get up on the.
That's right, yeah. You're with me?
Page 56.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So before you, there's a list of items listed as municipal needs. This list was basically compiled by really a history of the board's discussions over the different needs for the community from a budgetary perspective over the last several years, for the, for the board's discussion this evening. Just to briefly go through these items, the first is to look towards the expansion of the hours at the senior center, to have a Monday through Friday, a really full-time operation in office hours for seniors in the community. It has been a struggle to expand those operations because of financial constraints, and I know it's something that's been a high priority for the board over the last number of years, and this has certainly remained so. So that's the first item that I have on the list. The next is the to expand library operation, the hours in the library for up to seven days per week. Again, the, the library has worked hard to be creative in ways to expand their hours, but they've also had financial constraints in being able to do so. And I know there's been a desire on, from many parties to be able to expand those hours of the library. The next item is expand recreation department operations. Not only operations aspect of this, but to take a look at the, the funding and how that department is funded and operates is something that has, we've had a number of discussions about over the last two or three years. And again, as I listed on the first two items, we've been unable to do that because of financial constraints. The next item actually has two, two positions that we've talked about in the past, and I'm sure will continue discussions in the future, and that's to continue to pursue and have discussions with the school for shared services for items such as a human resources director and an IT director. As the board is aware, for the first time, we're moving forward with an IT position, and we're doing that and bringing on a full-time person by working with the town of Norfolk on sharing a position with them. But we are continuing to look at, at other ways we can share services with the schools, including the IT director possibly, and an HR director, which again, has been a discussion over the last several years. Many of the towns around here have hired human resource directors, and we're quickly becoming an outlier and not having one to address all the rapidly changing laws and requirements of human resources in municipal government. The next item is to establish a budget for road construction and maintenance. Right now, pretty much all our funding for road construction and major repair is found in our Chapter 90 grant funding that we receive from the state every year. And as you know, that is insufficient, hopefully insufficient, to keep up with the needs of the community as far as our road maintenance. So that continues to be a high priority, to find the necessary funding for, for that priority. Over the past couple of years, we've certainly realized the need for increased support and funding for tree trimming and removal in the community. There's a lot of dead trees, and there's a lot of, a tree work that needs to be done in, in the community, and that, that is a priority moving forward. The next item having to do with DPW staff, we did have a, a DPW study that was done last year, and the report came out just about a year ago. One of the recommendations of that report was to look at hiring up to two additional DPW staff through the general fund to help with those operations, as in their survey found that we, our staffing levels were about two full-time workers below the average of a lot of the area communities. So that's something we'd like to look at. We do have some, we are spread very thin in the, in the executive offices, trying to keep up with all the requirements in the day-to-day work. So it's something we want to at least continue that discussion, the ability to add some staff hours here to catch up and be able to maintain certain needs within the office that aren't currently being met just because of the workload here and the difficulty we're having in keeping up with that. The finance director has, in my discussions with her, has indicated that we, we are also stressed pretty thin in the treasurer's office. We're going to need to look at some additional staff hours there in order to keep up with the office work there. And we've also talked about a municipal facilities director, and whether that be a standalone for the municipal buildings or working with, with the school possibly on some sort of shared approach. To have a facilities director that really can move those facility-related matters forward is important for the community. So those are really all the needs we're, you know, that, that at least I'm putting forward for the board for consideration right now as part of a broader strategy, as hopefully we have some new growth funds and other funds available. We need to look at what the priorities are in the community, and the board needs to discuss that and make some determinations on where your priorities for the, for the community are. I did also list some long-term objectives for the community, and that is OPEB funding. We, we are not different than many towns in the Commonwealth in that we have not been able to put a large amount of funds into that account as of yet, but it's something we have to continue to look at and work on and contribute funds to, to meet our OPEB And also, as our budget grows, so does the need to continue to put funds in the town stabilization account. And the Department of Revenue has set, set a level of 5% of the operating budget as a, a minimum goal for communities to maintain in that account. And then also to look at open space funding for, for future purchases of open space in the community. So there's the, there's the quick list. There's, there's a lot there, a lot of funding is needed, and so there will have to be, you know, some discussion on prioritization from the board as to where the focus should be on the short term as, as we move forward in the budget process. But I'd be happy to answer any questions about any particular item that anyone has regards to that list.
Just quickly, I, I think this is an effort by the town administrator inconsistent with some of the conversations we've had about our looking at the priorities of the community as the community changes, as the community ages, and as the community reacts to some of the things so that the demand for support and services is growing. That, again, reflects the issue on the roads, which came up at the last town meeting. I know it wasn't, you know, it wasn't in order, so to speak, but the individual citizen who spoke about the roads was clearly just reflecting some of the concerns among the community at large, that the approach we've been taking up till now is just insufficient to meet the needs. And this conversation, of course, does have relevance as it relates to our efforts to work with the school committee and the finance committee to come up with a reason to plan for sharing the revenue of the town in, in a way that reflects the, the needs of the community, perhaps with a little bit more focus on how the community has changed over the last 10 years or so than might exist in the current formulation. So comments from the board members, any of these things look out of order, any of these things that we should add, any thoughts on prioritization? Obviously, we can't do all of this, we know that. We may not be able to do any of it, but I think it's worth at least having this board discuss it as a board, as well as, you know, have a position to just share with the tri-board meeting.
If I can make a couple of observations, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Jermaine.
First of all, it's a good start from my perspective. I will note that stabilization fund, we've gone to great lengths to keep it at 5%, very slightly above, is the way we started the year. I don't know exactly where we are now, but I'm hopeful that we're still at 5% or slightly It also, these lists of need dovetail up into the capital planning that's been going on. I think this is an important adjunct to it, because capital planning doesn't really deal with staffing and some of the other issues, but this has a mix in there. So I think it's an important point to be driven home. It's something that I think has been sorely lacking and not formalized in the past. I know there's a lot of angst out there regarding roads and other things, and the tree trimming is winter, is becoming more of an issue. I think it's a good start. I also would suggest that it's something that we need to think about over the next couple of weeks before we get back to the next tri-board meeting, because I suspect there are other things as we go forward that we could add into this that makes some sense. But overall, I like the direction that this is taking.
Well, we also, you know, may begin gaining additional insight as we go through the budget hearings with our department heads later this week. So I agree, this is not exhaustive, this is, but I think it's a, it's, it's a legitimate and prudent thing for this board to do to consider our perspective on the community priorities going forward. There's a lot of ways to address this, but to not look at it is probably the worst thing to do, because decisions we're making on budgetary recommendations are a reflection of, you know, what we prioritize in the community, that's for sure. So is there anything, Mr. Jermaine, you think that is missing right now, you'd like to think about it some more?
I'm having a hard, I mean, I can think about. I'm having a hard, I mean, I can think of odds and ends, but nothing that, uh, substance yet that I would put in there. Um, the, these are hot-button areas that have come to the forefront of the town over a period of time. Some of them a little more so than others, I suspect, unless you work in the town hall, you don't see the issues for the treasurer's office or the select board. Well, the select board, I go in there and I never see anybody doing anything in there, right? So Karen will say that she just sits there, nothing to do, but it's pretty obvious. We, we are running very, very tight. Um, but you get into staffing issues and we have to look at staffing and some of these other issues as is noted here as all-town issues. It's not any one department. And I think that's the critical perspective that's been lacking even in some of the tri-board discussions, is to look at these as the town, not an individual department within the town. And to that end, that's why I like this list. It begins to bring these to the floor. I mean, let's face it, seniors are becoming a more populous part of this town and they, not only are going to demand services, but they have a right to those services as taxpayers. So we have to be cognizant of what their needs are. I could put some other things under the seniors under that's more than the 40 hours in terms of facilities that they need and so forth. But there's another thing in here that we don't typically come up with and that's what I call transportation. Um, we have as an infrastructure, I'll say, a minimal amount of transportation for residents of the town and particularly for residents who don't drive. And I think it's something that is not in here that has to be addressed and we, it's incumbent upon us to address that. And there's going to be a great, a growing need for that, whether they're seniors or we bring in, um, 40B housing or whatever else, there's a need to have a better transportation system. There's a need to have better transportation into Boston, something we've talked about almost every year. Um, we pay a certain amount to the state if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Kozinski, but we get very little for it because we don't have anything that actually comes from this town. We actually have to move people to other towns so they can, uh, get on the transportation from those towns. Again, something that we need to think about in this community as to what our needs are. So those are my initial thoughts.
Okay. So more, more work to be done perhaps, Ms. Underhill?
Um, I, I also agree with this list. Um, you know, if we're making wish lists, then I could certainly add some things to it. Um, I agree with Mr. Germain on the transportation, which actually came up in one of the other committees that, um, I'm a liaison to. Um, and actually somebody had, uh, a resident had reached out to me about getting transportation to appointments and being able to schedule that and how to do that because we don't have anything like the ride here. Um, so I can definitely appreciate those needs and the, this, the group of, the seniors as a group, I feel, are definitely underserved and, and we need to take some steps in that direction. Um, in terms of staffing on the municipal side, I do think, um, an HR director in some fashion would be important. Um, I'd also, now again, this is my wish list, I'd also love an assistant town administrator and a communications director. I think those things would be extremely helpful and it would really free up, uh, Mr. Kozinski and, uh, his brother to do plenty of other things that they, um, probably don't have any time to do right now. Um, we're really lucky that we have the people working with us that we have because, uh, they work really hard. And, um, it would be nice to, you know, kind of fill out our municipal staff so that, you know, tasks can be delegated appropriately. Um, I, it's, it's, it's tough for me though as a list because, um, it's a tough time because we're still in a pandemic. So certainly increasing hours for things is great, but it's kind of hard at the moment since people can't really go to them. Um, and, and some of these things to me seem more like, sort of like an emergency or, or putting out fires, like the trees in the roads. Um, so it, I, I, I would struggle with prioritizing this list because I do feel that, you know, just all of it is important, but, uh, I, I do think that adding more in terms of future considerations at minimum for more, um, staffing would be a good call.
Well, just to elaborate further, um, again, this is, um, a couple of thoughts here. One is that if you're, if we are listing, um, a page or two of municipal priorities, um, then including at least some reference to the capital plan is thoroughly appropriate because obviously that's going to come out of, uh, you know, the budget somehow, uh, not the operating budget so much as some capital budget. Um, and I agree that transportation is, is, is a perennial and there's a real need for that, whether it's leveraging so we can get the ride in here or creating, you know, capability within the community, uh, that would be a good thing, I think. Um, from my perspective, of course, the senior services are, um, you know, woefully lacking. Um, I have this concept that we emerge from COVID in the summertime and when seniors gear up and be able to get out, we're likely to welcome them, you know, to the senior center five days a week, uh, for programs and whatnot. Um, so we've also seen one, I think a lesson from the pandemic is, you know, the value of, uh, robust leadership in the recreation area that cannot in the long run be dependent upon user fees. The, the community ought to invest in a position there that the community pays for and therefore it's able to provide programs, uh, to a broad range of, of citizens. Um, but the whole conversation here to me is a way for us, and this isn't the be-all and the end-all, but it's a way for this board to really, you know, perhaps take a position on certain budgetary items over the next several months as the budget gets worked on. Um, and if in fact, the, the, the prospect is for, uh, you know, revenue above, may, above, um, level service, then perhaps prioritization here begins to crystallize, um, which is something that, again, as Mr. Germain indicates, is a community decision. And this, of course, this does not list anything on the education side because that's not our primary responsibility. But I, I, I think that it's important for these kinds of things to be articulated and to share and shared. And to some degree, we will see as we work on these over the next few months, whether or not we're able to, you know, move budget dollars to, to address some of these needs. We can't do all of them, um, because we just don't have the funding. But it does seem to me that one of the things that isn't quite addressed in the formulation of a new revenue sharing plan, uh, that's been discussed at tri-board, that was discussed, discussed last year, is that these kinds of priorities are not really discussed. The revenue plan that was presented, which is the four percent plan, is a roll forward of the existing allocation and only after everything is divvied up and we find there's some additional money available, do we have the opportunity under that formulation to then prioritize among these things and among any prioritizations that the school department might also articulate. So, um, we as a board are going to have to take a position, as we know, going forward with the, the tri-board, is whether or not we're going to, um, except is the wrong word, agree that that formulation that's being presented is one that we feel is in the best interests of the community. And if we do, then we, I think we need to understand what implications there might be if revenue in fact exceeds, uh, the level service revenue, which seems to be a reasonable possibility based upon projections of, you know, new revenue, new revenue from growth, new revenue from real estate growth, new revenue from the marijuana businesses, but that, that's, those are the issues that we're, you know, I think we should be grappling with over the next couple of months as we try to formulate what we think is a fair and reasonable budget. Now, I'm not trying to create, uh, controversy and I really do believe that we should reach agreement with the other two committees, the boards, this time around and not just do a fallback. Um, but I think there's more work required to do that. That's just my opinion. Um, now, the other members of the board, I'd like you to weigh in on that because clearly, you know, there was sentiment among all three of us that we'd like to find a way to work with this configuration because it's headed in a, a direction we think might be useful.
Chairman McCaffrey?
Yes.
If I could, um, you know, comment a bit about the tri-board budget discussion, is that okay right now? Are we moving towards that or are we still?
Well, these are blended because they really, they really.
Yes. Okay. Um, I really appreciated the, the presentation on the, the four percent plan, if you will. Um, I have, I have a number of thoughts about it, but in terms of looking at it numbers-wise, it, it looked like it made sense. It looked like it, it was fair. And I know that there is a, a very big divide between, um, you know, the, the monies necessary for the school system versus the money, well, necessary is probably not a good word, but the money that needs to be divided between the two, um, you know, between school and municipal needs. I, I, I can't, I can't say that the school needs less, they probably need more. I'm sure they al- always need more. Um, I'm sure the municipal side always needs more, but the four percent plan seemed to make it so that it was, um, it was moving us forward with, um, you know, our current, current needs in mind, so to speak, and with the opportunity for growth even into one of those budgets. So, and then with even possibility, money, possibly money left over to just accomplish like specific tasks. Um, I think if nothing else, I, from what I gathered, uh, the finance committee and the school committee unanimously agreed with the merit of this plan last year. Um, and while I don't know if any plan is going to be absolutely perfect, and I think some of this does tie into, you know, the capital planning that we're talking about in, in prioritizing needs, I think that definitely needs to happen outside of the operational budgets. But I think, uh, to me, going with the four percent plan would be a good idea, given that I don't feel that the 65-35 plan as it currently stands has been working well. And if projections and, and numbers are right, it looks like it could be a little bit more profitable for the town in a way to further adjust needs if we go with the four percent plan and have that, that money left over.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Germain, yes.
I'm probably a holdout here. Um, I'm in the process of putting together a different look at the plan. I believe that a plan that has to be put forward has to start with the basis of not just the costs for the schools and where it's coming from, which is where I see that revenue split took place on the four percent. But we need to put into a plan some of these costs that are coming up on the list of municipal needs and some of the overall town issues. And then we have to decide with the monies that are left over, how best to split those monies, uh, whether it's a 50-50 split or whatever. I'm not wedded to any particular growth perspective or anything else. What I'm looking at is saying, we have to start with a plan that deals with covering the school's basic costs, and they've laid those out, town's basic costs, but the town has costs that we have to look at for the whole town. And that will include the seniors, the roads, and a variety of other things, tree trimming, I don't care, even transportation, all that has to be taken into account. And then we can worry about what the splits are that we're going to work with. I'm not suggesting that we are cutting anything. What I'm saying is we have to start from a perspective that we deal with what is, once we deal with the funding of what is, we deal with the needs and we deal with the town's needs. We're not dealing with any one department's needs. So that's part of what I'm trying to put together at this point and I hope to have it more clearly defined by the time we get to our next tri-board meeting. But I thought Craig's start was an interesting start. It gave me a basis for thinking about things, but it didn't start with all the numbers that we have even this year as a base. And it certainly didn't start with a base of looking at other town issues that have to be addressed before we worry about, and these could include schools as well, but things that we have to worry about before we even get to the point of saying, okay, here's the remaining budget. And I certainly don't look at that remainder as sacrosanct to any particular split. Maybe we decide it's X and Y, maybe it's X and X, I don't know, but that's where I'm coming out of this.
If, if I may, after that, um, I think, I think that's an interesting point. I didn't, I guess maybe I would need to hear a little bit more about the, um, idea of a split on the remaining money because to me, the way I interpreted that was we, so we've been doing the 65-35 and that's what we've all been functioning on. So we're assuming a four percent growth. So those two numbers that we're currently at are going to grow by four percent. And then there'd be remaining money because somehow this seems magical. And with that remaining money, um, I, I don't, I don't believe, maybe I missed it, that there was any proposal of a specific way to deal with that money. I think one of the examples given was if you need our, I'll, I'll make a loose example, I guess. So if we needed to add an HR director on the municipal side and that, I, I don't know what the decision process would be for that, but if that is what's done, that is, that is something that needs to be added to the budget moving forward. So if we have $200,000 and we're going to allocate $100,000 to an HR director from that extra money, then next year, our municipal budget needs to also include that $100. But it sounds like there's still an opportunity for growth, that there'd still then be money at the end to decide what to do. So if it's something like adding a staff member, that's going to be like a recurring fee, that, that would end up needing to be absorbed as part of that budget, which might make it not as balanced at a 65-35 per se, but with a four percent growth. So I don't know how the decision part would be, uh, proposed for who, who gets what or who decides how to, to use that so-called extra, um, or what gets added to, um, anyone's budget, but it's out, I mean, that might be the sticking point. Otherwise, it's, it sounded, it's sounded straightforward. Um, so I guess I would be more interested in, you know, what happens after that. It sounds great with the four- It sounds great with the four percent and the growth and the money left over, but how do we decide what to do with what's left over? I I agree that I assuming that the sixty five thirty five we've been going with are the necessary budgets for school and municipal, then we're just going to have to work forward from that. And outside of those things is where we need to add all of this stuff in and figure out where it goes. Because I mean, aside from cutting anything, that's I I think that's just where we're sitting. But again, I could be misunderstanding.
Well, from my point of view, you clearly are not misunderstanding. You that is, the proposal as stated is to use the percentage rule forward. And frankly, there's no magic in the four. Because what's happening is we're solving for the answer. Once we go through all this and we realize that we've got enough money, then we we go with the four, and then there's some left over, and it's not just picking, I mean, it's because of legitimate revenue, then there's the opportunity to set priorities and allocate them to functions, whether it happens to be a school function or what or a municipal function. What does the community think is the most important next thing to do? And I think that's underlying what this conversation was all about. You know, my concern is that I think that things like some of the things that are on this list are allocation decisions that should be made first, not just when you're done with and see what's left, but for the community as a whole to say, what we really need to do for the next budget cycle is X and Y and Z, whatever they they may be. Now, how do you do that? Well, you can have conversation among the board, the school committee, you can use the tri board to try and reach a consensus on that. Because the proposal that was put forward, as you indicate, as both of you indicate, there's an item at the end that's going to require some prioritization. Because the four percent, and as I said, there's no magic in four, just a number that's based upon what we think the revenue is going to be. If the revenue is a lot less, then the number would be three or two. There's no magic in the number that that's and that was my that's my observation, just like there's really no risk that sixty five thirty five will end up with a spending money we don't need because no one's going to do that. So I I'm concerned that the community is not in this configuration is not going to get the opportunity that I think we should have to reassess or reset some of the basic services that we provide. And once we've done that, then if we want to roll forward at four percent or three or whatever it is, I'm more comfortable with that. But I have a hard time frankly turning to Mila's seniors and saying, why don't we just wait to see if there's any money left so that we can open the senior center five days a week? That's basically where that's my biggest issue, to be honest. Because that just doesn't doesn't feel good to me. It doesn't feel like the right answer to a community that, you know, is growing by leaps and bounds and which has, you know, in many ways, uh, you know, paid its share, and it's time for us as a community to recognize that and, you know, provide a more robust service set for seniors. That's my speech. I'm sorry for going on, but that's really a concern that I have. Now, I also want to be able to this year not just walk away and say, we're just going to use sixty five thirty five. And, you know, the two other boards agreed to that. Well, that was fine. We didn't agree with it because we didn't think it reflected the needs of our community and our constituencies. And I make no apologies for that. So I don't want to go round and round with us or with them. I I think with faith, we ought to try to reach some kind of cons consensus. And I'm more than willing to, you know, work some more on this with you folks, which is why I brought it up tonight, because as you know, this is not something that can be negotiated behind closed doors. We have to hash this out in a public meeting so the public can be, you know, have the opportunity to hear what we have to say and participate if they'd like. So anyway. I I think that we probably, you know, might take some time after we've gone through the budgets on Wednesday to have some further discussion. I think it is related, so we can probably do it. And of course, Mr. Germaine, I think we'll all be interested in um hearing about an alternative proposal you want to make, because I think we should consider all these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I think we're in much agreement, and I think it would be good if we could perhaps schedule some kind of meeting within the next week or so. I don't remember when the next tri board is, but certainly prior to that.
Yeah, we should meet before then.
Right, so that and I'll try to have every all my numbers and ideas together in a fashion that we can discuss and and be open to the public. And I would hope to see public participation in this. I would encourage it. We have ideas. We think we have some understanding of where some of the needs are. But I would really look forward to having other members of the community putting forth their ideas. That's always good at any rate.
Okay, so I guess that we will try to have some further conversation about this before we meet with the tri board because we would like to be in a position, I think, as a board, to work with the other two groups to move forward with an agreement as to how we're going to roll forward. And I'm not trying to suggest that I think that the work that's been done is anything other than done good faith, it's thorough, it's comprehensive, it tries to come up with a reasonable solution. I just think it needs to have a little bit more done with it. That's my view. Okay, so um let's run through the budget meetings on Wednesday. We'll see where we stand and try to come up with perhaps another date to meet um prior to the eighteenth. I think it's the eighteenth, right?
Yes, it's the eighteenth.
So we have a little bit of time, but at least we started the started our dialogue a little bit more comprehensively. Okay, next item on the agenda is strategy for senior services. I sent an email to you, Karen, late in the night, late this afternoon. Did you get it?
I did, and I did forward it on. Hopefully the rest of the board received it or no. I can I can show it if you want me to on the screen.
Well, it's just a bunch of words.
It is a bunch of words, but that is up to you. Did Pete and Erin, did you receive it?
Yes, I have it up here.
Okay.
Yes, I'm looking for it, but I got it.
Okay, good.
The enthusiasm level is beyond what I had hoped.
It's very exciting.
I think it is very exciting. Well, I I'm happy to share it. That is entirely your call.
I could, well, yeah.
Yes, sure. I sent Pete the illustrated editions.
These pictures are great.
Hold on, I'm trying to open it.
What I'm trying to do again is to move forward our.
Here are the words.
Yeah, not our solution, but the fact that we identified this as a goal, and I'd like to, um, you know, work on some kind of consensus among this board as to what we where we think we want to go, whether we can get there this year or not is a different issue. And so what I've tried to do is, at least in in some words, to indicate what we might, where we might go with this. And I'm trying to differentiate this from um just the building project. I mean, the the project to build a new senior center, which is a lot of work's being done there, and there's a lot of interesting ideas and thoughts. But this is more than a building. This is really what is the model for services that we'd like to provide? How would we like to provide them? What should we provide, you know, through the actual council on aging itself? How should we identify programs of interest to seniors that might be more reasonably delivered through either the library or the recreation department or what have you? And these things are going on right now. I don't mean to suggest that they're not. Because if you were the inventory services being provided to Mila's seniors, certainly before COVID, um, a lot of folks are are interacting. The library does programs, the Board of Health has programs, um, the Police Department offers programs through the Council on Aging, you know, to to seniors. But what I'd like to do is have us develop what we believe what we believe to be the the mo the the strategy for senior services, what we should be doing with them and how we should be putting them together, which supports the building potentially of uh either a renovated or a new ser senior service center, but it goes beyond that. Because I think one of the early things you recognize, of course, if you're looking at a new facility, is it makes no sense to build a new facility and open it, you know, eighty percent of the time. If we're to do this, we're we're going to want to have a set of programs that are ready, willing, and able to move into the to a new a new facility. And I don't think we have to wait to start to work on that. So um that that's kind of my, I don't know if this is helpful to discussion tonight or I just wanted to start at the ball rolling because I am cognizant of the fact that we, you know, did set this as one of our objectives for this uh this year with the board.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Germaine?
Yeah, I I don't disagree with anything that's there. I think my concern is how we codify it to something that makes sense for the seniors. In other words, seniors are not a group of the same types of individuals. There are various needs within the senior community. And I think what we have to think about putting together are a set of items to try to meet a variety of different needs, whether it's a senior center or rides or transportation to other facilities or transportation wherever, uh, special programs. I'm not suggesting, as you point out, that there aren't other things taking place in the community, whether it's library functions and other functions like that. But I don't know if ever as a community or certainly as a board tried to put together a list of things, items, concerns, whatever, for the senior community that tries to address a large variety of needs for that group of individuals. Obviously, different ages have different desires and different needs, and we ought to be thinking in terms of all of those and what can we do? And we should be learning from what other towns have found. As you know, I spent a number of years living in Menfield. They have quite a facility down there. There's no reason we can't learn from them and other towns as a result of what they've built, how they're using those facilities, and what other needs did they find in the senior community? I mean, I'm going to take something just out of the air. I don't know if any seniors are interested. Certainly, we have the equivalent of Meals on Wheels. But is there any reason we shouldn't be considering a way that if seniors wanted, they could congregate in an area and have, I don't know, hamburgers, hot dogs, whatever it is, available that they could order and sit down and congregate among themselves, play bridge? I don't know if anybody plays bridge any longer, but that kind of thing, which some of them would be interested in perhaps. Others may not. Maybe others are just interested in being with some people, maybe watching a movie. All I'm saying is we need to think about that, but we need the input from the remaining from many of the seniors in the community. And that says, we need to somehow get to them so they begin to tell us the kinds of things they'd like to see from within the community. And, you know, this represents a start, but I think we need to get out there and pull them.
Well, I certainly agree with that. I mean, the purpose of this is to start and to identify what else we need to know so that, um, you know, we can design programs and whatnot to meet their needs. I mean, the certainly the learning on this is, yeah, the the senior community is growing by leaps and bounds, but it also grows based upon what I think in the trade is called, you know, age cohorts. There are seniors who are sixty five whose needs are different from the ones who are eighty five. There are seniors who have, um, you know, mobility issues and others that don't. There are so it's it's not a it's not quite as it's not it's a little simpler when in 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 the school, you're you go to first grade and then your second grade and then your third grade, and sure, there's some movement there, but it's pretty prescribed. That's not what's going on in senior services. And I do agree, there's a lot of learning that can be had from other communities, uh, both with respect to the way they look at the the cohorts and what the way they look at the kinds of programs that different people would like to participate in. So that's kind of the thought here, right? How it's it here's what we're trying to here's we're trying to get to. What else can we learn and how can we pull this together so that we have a statement that's not dependent on the building? That's what I was trying to get at. Because whether we have a building, wherever that works out, is going to it's not going to be tomorrow. We know that. And even the group that's looking at um a recommendation for senior center uh is very much committed to the need for more outreach and input from seniors, from the affected community. So I think we want to not be separate from that, but we want to uh work with them. But I feel as though it's important to define sort of the programs for seniors to support them. It's not independent of the building, but it's not totally dependent on the building either. I guess that's what I was trying to get at. So you you come up with what you're trying to achieve, you look at the structure you're trying to put together to achieve it, you realize that, you know, the focus may well be the, you know, the Council on Aging, but others in the other departments are already providing programs. We talk about things like, uh, you know, if we had a communications director from earlier conversation, that person could work diligently to help communicate some of the programs and opportunities for seniors to. The purpose of this document was to begin this discussion, not to end it. That's I guess that's what I'm leading to. And Erin, you have some thoughts you wanted to add?
Uh, yes, and a and a question, actually. So even stemming from our our last this last discussion a minute ago about the budget, I agree with you that the underserved senior population needs to be served. I I would agree that, you know, being able to provide services forty hours a week is very important. I think what's I think what I don't know and what I'd be interested to learn, I guess, to further this conversation, is I know there's, so we have the Council on Aging and the senior center area, and I know there's programs, um, you know, obviously COVID hinders a lot of things, but I know that there were there's some there's a fitness room. I know that they do some exercise stuff in the gym. I know, um, I have to say, if I had free time, I want to go down there and challenge some folks to some cribbage because I think I could have an interesting time doing that. But um, I don't know, I don't know what else is done. Like, I know with the library, there is doorstep delivery, and I deliver books for a certain couple in town that can't get out. So I know these these options that exist. I don't know who is responsible for putting together the activities of outreach. Is that the person that runs the Council on Aging, or is there nobody filling that need?
Well, I think that to some degree, yes, the Council on Aging is trying to fill that need. To some degree, it's hamstrung by, you know, having a less than full-time person or people, so it's harder to do. I mean, and and so to me, that's also part of the. I mean, and and so to me, that's also part of the end product here. You know, do we want to re- reconfirm or confirm that for a senior service delivery, we want to have a hub, which is to say, okay, you know, maybe a particular program based upon, you know, the facility and whatnot, you know, in October, is better served by doing it in the library as opposed to in the senior center. Well, that's fine, and we should all endorse it. And from a policy point of view, that's what we're going to do. And if we feel as though the best outcome ultimately is to be able to run those kind of programs out of a facility that is dedicated to seniors, that helps us inform us as to what kind of a senior center we want to create. So I totally agree with your thought there that, you know, part of my what I believe a strategy should be, you know, is to make sure that there is a focal point for service delivery, that it's delivered most effectively by whomever. I mean, if we're going to do, um, seniors read to elementary school kids, that's that's going to be delivered at the school, not at the senior center.
Mr. Chair.
So I and I think it's only reasonable, though, to say that if you're going to do that kind of what I consider to be a more robust coordination and program development strategy, you have to invest the money in the staff that's going to do it. Otherwise, it's never going to happen.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to add my two cents here in reference to Erin of what you were talking about. I think Patty runs the majority of the Council on Aging programming, um, and obviously Chris runs things through the rec department and Kim Tolson will run things through the library. But I agree, and I've said that to Patty a few times, that it would be good if the, you know, those couple of department heads would have a meeting once a month or something to help cohesively plan these things because there are a lot of library programs run. Um, you know, Chrissy, like I said, the recreation, the pickleball has taken off crazily. You know, I think there is a lot of interest when you get the things out there. Um, and even I I agree, having a member of the school meet because there are a lot of seniors that would like to go over and help, like you said, read to the kids or maybe become involved in some sort of programming with them. Um, so, you know, personally, I would just like to see that. I feel like a lot of the seniors see it only as like this little tiny senior center in the basement of Town Hall. Um, and and even despite the fact that we don't have the big, like you said, facility yet, um, they could certainly expand and feel a lot better if they had all of these buildings to use. And I think so, I just want to agree with that. I think it's a great idea.
I see that. Our service or or creating that initiative should come from the select board. We're the ones who are responsible for setting the policy. Um, and if we think this is the best way to do business, for example, you know, we hold a monthly meeting of department heads that have senior services delivered. Uh, it's a little bit down in the weeds, but if it doesn't come from the board, then it's probably not going to happen. And it's not because people aren't of goodwill or are doing their best because they are, but they also have limitations, as you well know, as to what they can actually achieve based upon the resources we present to them. So from my perspective, if you're going to create, let's call it a senior activity council or something of the department heads, you can't just do that by adding a task, right? You need to fund it.
Exactly.
So that they who are going to be able, they're going to have the resources and the and the both, you know, physical and, uh, personnel resources to be able to be effective to do the job. Um, and I that's the purpose of this conversation, really, that this board to take a position. And as Mr. Jermaine indicated and and also Ms. Underhill, we need more input. I mean, this isn't I never put this forward as the answer. It is just a framework for us to say, okay, this is a need, we want to address this need. What process are we going to go through to try to articulate how we want this to proceed and what implication would that have in the short term? This is the decision we're going to make very soon from a budget point of view for FY22. So that's that's kind of where I was hoping to have this conversation lead, which is in fact what's happening.
Chairman McCaffrey.
Yes, Ms. Underhill.
Um, so I and I do agree with you and I saw that you noted in this document that, you know, because of COVID, it's kind of hard to get a good hold of people. Um, you know, so when we when and however we can do that appropriately, I think that needs to it happens sooner rather than later when when it can. I think increasing the, um, the hours to a forty-hour a week, a full-time operating, um, senior center, I think would is certainly absolutely the minimum first step that we should be taking. Um, I do think, um, I would be interested to hear over that, like in increasing, um, the availability of that to forty hours a week, is that going to also get us enough time to have more coordination of services or do we need another staff member to do that?
Well, I agree. That that becomes a little bit more long-term objective, but you're right. I mean, it I mean, I think that the expanding the hours of the center is really it's it's user-centric in the sense that, okay, folks that have to go home at two don't have to go home at two anymore. They can stay in socializer, go over to the pickleball court or whatever they're going to do. Um, and I think we'll hear from the director at at the budget hearing, um, you know, some of her ideas about how she'd be more able to do outreach to other communities to learn more about what they're doing. And, you know, based upon limited time and schedule, even now, it's difficult for her to attend conferences and things because it's just, you know, it's it's just too restrictive a timetable. And she's doing what I think she should do with the limited hours she has, which is focusing on programs and things we've got to deliver, uh, it's more hands-on, whether it's the meals or it is others, you know, counseling that occurs or or those kinds of things. So there's no easy answer to this and other and I've seen, you know, other communities have spent quite a bit of time thinking this through. It often seems to come up when a when a physical facility is being considered, which is kind of what's happening here, too. But the two are not the same. Um, they're related, certainly, but they're not the same.
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, I would also just like to add that I if you do any sort of a survey whatsoever and Patty has the ability to get that out, you will certainly get some opinions. Our seniors are very vocal, um, given the opportunity, and they will come and tell you exactly what they're looking for. Um, and I'm sure Patty would help you if you, you know, develop some sort of a survey, but, um-
Well, if that's what the board wants to do, yes, we will have-
If the board decides that that's what it right, the direction that they want to go, I think you you would get a lot of great feedback from that.
So that may well be an important component of what we do. So what I would like to do with this is, you know, let I know that my colleagues on the board didn't get this in advance, as I have hoped, um, but if you would take it and look at it more and think about how you think we should proceed in terms of steps for the project, if you will, rather than the outcome, I think that would be helpful. We certainly are going to have the opportunity to talk to the director, um, of the Council on Aging at our budget hearing. Uh, I believe she's going to be presenting to us some potential increases in the budget, um, because typically she does and 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 we tell her she can't ask. Um, but it it will be the opportunity for further conversation on Wednesday.
Well, if nothing else, we will have a brand-new gym when COVID is said and done.
A new floor.
A brand-new gym floor, and it is beautiful.
Um, so to move this along, I know that this turned out to be quite a bit of conversation and not necessarily tonight, a lot of decisions, but I think at some point in time, we have to have these kind of meetings. Otherwise, we don't get our arms around some of the substantive things that we we need to work on. Um, next item is this, the board's schedule for spring. There's a list of potential meeting dates for folks. Um, that's the intent. Um, we've already talked about, we may need to schedule another one between the tenth and the eighteenth, but after Wednesday, we'll talk about that and try to figure out if we need to do that and then pick a date for us to talk about that before the eighteenth. That's I think that's what the board members would like to do. Okay. Um, minutes to be determined, right, Karen?
Yes. I will have I will have two sets of minutes as well as two sets of executive session at your next meeting.
Okay. All right. So that sort of takes us through the open session. Um, we now have, I think, the need to go into executive session, hopefully, uh, for just a couple items that won't take very long.
Yes, we will. I will try to limit it to less than ten minutes. It's it's been a long day for everyone, I'm sure.
Do we have another Zoom number?
I hope so.
Yes, you should.
Okay.
I think I I think I emailed it to you. Do you have it? If you don't, I can email it quickly.
I see I have it.
Do you mind forwarding it? Do you mind forwarding it to Jim?
Makes me look like a dummy, which is not hard.
Jim.
I'm sure it's there somewhere.
I know. You get a lot of emails from me, so I try to I try to limit them, but it's tough.
Okay, it is sent.
Okay, very good.
I just sent it to him myself.
They have you back, Jim. Don't be very-
No excuses now.
No excuses. Okay. Um, well, at this point, I'm going to, uh, we're going to ask the board to consider going into an executive session. This is to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at sixty-one A parcel on Villan Street and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, the SEIU contract, uh, when we're going to complete that discussion, executive session, and then adjourn. Uh, so I'll poll the board on the executive session. Mr. McCaffrey, yes? Mr. Jer-
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
All right. Motion's carried. We will now go into executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Night to everyone.